Tonight, I am going to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
... in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Board of, Radnor Board of Commissioners meeting from Monday, February fourteenth. Just a brief notice that we met in executive session preceding the meeting to discuss legal matters with counsel. And before we move to public participation, the Commissioners have been hearing from many residents over the last several days, so I'm making an assumption that many of you here are to speak at our opening public comment about a shop that opened in Wayne late last week. I would like to, before I invite the public, I'm going to ask our Solicitor, John Rice, to just speak to the issue, lay a little groundwork, and then we'll open it up for everybody to speak. At public comment, I give you five minutes. I'll sort of wave one-minute warning when your time's running down, and then we'll move to the next person. But right now, John, would you address the issue?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. I guess we've all done a lot of research since last Thursday about Kraton and the shop that opened up in downtown Wayne. And the township and the Township's Code Department, and we've got a couple, I've gotten a couple of requests on meetings and minutes and things like that. There was no, no meetings, there were no phone calls, there were no permits ever applied for prior to that shop opening up last Wednesday or Thursday, I think it was. The, for those of you that live there, you know the windows were papered. Township employees left business cards there over a period of time, but there was no contact at all by anybody from that organization with the township until today. The last week, when Mr. Kaczynski found out that the business was open, we were as surprised as everybody in this room, believe me. And they were told that they could not open without permits. I think we all know there was a Starbucks there for a number of years and closed down in 2020. And there was definitely work done on the interior of the building for the new business. So they are shut down. And then today, Kevin and I spoke with two representatives of the organization, and they're headquartered in St. Louis. And I guess they hire contractors locally to fit out these businesses. And we went through what the requirements are, and the requirements are pretty substantial. There's building permits, there's maybe electrical permits, there might be demolition permits, there's zoning permits, there's business license permits. So all those things, they're, they've agreed that they have to do that. They've also agreed to, that they're shut down until all of that is resolved. We've also made a request to remove the signage, which we think is also a code issue. But what the folks here need to know, we don't have any plans on what they did in that building yet. So until we get the plans and we see the floor plan, we don't know what the scope of what the permits are and what the requirements are. So we expect to get that in the next week or two. It's not something you fill out a form and file it. We need floor plans of work that's already been done for our code officials to review it and then make a determination of what complies and what doesn't comply. So that's, that's where we're at on this. It's closed. We're, we've made a request to have the signage either covered up or removed. They will have to go to the Design Review Board for the signs. There may be other approvals, but until they submit what they did, we can't really tell you exactly what, I mean, we know that there's some permits that they're going to have to get. But they, the way it works is you submit a permit application and describe what you're doing. Our code people make a determination whether that's within code or not, whether it meets whatever the building or electrical permit requirements are or not. We tell them that, and then they either fix it or they go away. So, or they do something else. So that's, that's the process in every township and every borough in this, in the state of Pennsylvania, they have that kind of process in place. Some more detailed than others. So that's, and I don't want to spend any more time with that, but that's where we are as of today. Today's the first day that we've spoken to anybody from the organization regarding this use.
Can we ask questions then? Or can we only...
So, public comment is the opportunity for all of our, anybody in the audience to come and speak. You can speak for five minutes. It is not a Q and A. Commissioners don't respond, and, and staff and Solicitor not to respond to public comment.
Do you have any more questions? Is that what you just said?
And if anybody has questions after the meeting, you can certainly ask questions after the meeting. But it's not a, it's not a back-and-forth question and answer, it's public comment. There's a lot of people here that want to make public comment, but questions that you have, either me or Kevin Kaczynski can answer them after the meeting. Or tomorrow.
I think, John, probably one issue that hasn't been addressed is the ability to ban Kraton. So I'm sure that there is, there are questions about that. Can you speak a little bit to what the municipality level can do or lack of action that we can take?
Well, what we...
What did you say? I'm sorry. I think that...
He'll speak to that. I'm, I'm asking him to speak to whether or not the municipality has the ability to ban Kraton.
Yeah, there's no, there's no state law that lets a township do that. There's, the state, some states have banned Kraton. I think there's six that have done that. There's some, a few municipalities throughout the country that have done that. The township's been in touch with the state rep. There's some pending legislation in the Pennsylvania Legislature to do that. If folks are here interested in that as a separate issue from code compliance, which it is, then that's where you need to go with the state legislature. I don't know of any townships in Pennsylvania that have passed any kind of legislation that would ban either that or some other type of a cannabis drug, but it's a state legislature issue. It's really not a local government issue at this point. And the township obviously doesn't have anything that specifically addresses that. I mean...
Did you just say that there are seven states?
There's six.
Is that the...
There's six.
I'm going to reiterate, we're not doing Q and A session.
Yeah, there's six states.
We just have a lot of people who want to speak, and we want to hear from everybody.
I would love to take public comment.
Hi, is it this microphone here? This one?
Yeah, if you can get to the small one.
Okay.
Hi there. I'm actually here to represent eighty-eight people that signed the letter.
And when I timed it out, it was about six minutes. So could you please allow me to go over a little bit?
I'll give you, I'll give you a one-minute warning and see where you are.
Okay, thanks so much. I'll try to talk quickly. Hi, my name is Kate Hart, and I live on Meadowbrook Circle in Ward Three in South Wayne. I'm here this evening with a letter signed by eighty-eight of my neighbors, local business owners, students, and their families that are in opposition to the CBD Kratom store that opened suddenly last Thursday in the old Starbucks location in downtown Wayne. I'm not here to discuss the pros and cons of CBD use, because quite honestly, that's not the issue at hand. The issue here is how did a store that sells substances that are banned in nineteen states literally open illegally next to two schools, three nursery schools, and local churches without anyone knowing about it? I'm here today to point out the reason a store of this nature does not fit with the culture and character of our community, and to ask that we take measures to prevent stores of this nature in the future. Wayne is a charming, idyllic community. We pride ourselves on being family-friendly and a safe place to raise our families. Niche ranks Radnor as the second most family-friendly place to live in Delaware County. We hold annual events like the Walk to Wayne, the Car Show, the Truck Zoo, trick-or-treating for local businesses, the Fall Festival, the Night at the Ballpark, the Christmas Tree Lighting, and Fire Prevention Nights to make families feel welcome and part of our community. It's a tradition in middle school for children to walk to Wayne on Fridays and visit local establishments. Wayne is a community built on being a safe place to raise families. Having our children go to school yards from an establishment that sells Kratom and Delta Eight does not make our town a safe place for our children. Until last week, I had never heard of these substances. After a quick Google search, I learned the following. Kratom is banned in six states, including states such as Vermont and Alabama that have legalized marijuana. In 2019, a teenager from Westchester died in a car crash in Tradefrain Easttown Township. He had taken Kratom, suffered a heart attack, and crashed his car. The Chester County Coroner ruled his death was from acute mitoglycerine intoxication, an active ingredient in Kratom. No other drugs were found in his system. Kratom is a pain-relieving drug similar to opiates. The Mayo Clinic has declared it unsafe and warns of these side effects: dizziness, drowsiness, hallucinations, delusion, depression, breathing suppression, seizure, coma, and death. They caution, it's not exactly what level of Kratom is toxic in people, but as with pain medications and recreational drugs, it's possible to overdose on it. The FDA warns that Kratom, which affects the same opioid receptors as morphine, appears to have properties that exposes users to the risk of addiction, abuse, and dependence. In fact, Kratom's a product that people who are addicted to opiates use when they're trying to get off of opiates or high when they cannot find them. Delta Eight is another product sold at this store, which is even worse than Kratom. It's been outlawed in nineteen states. The U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency considers Delta Eight an illegal controlled substance. The FDA warns it's important for consumers to be aware that Delta Eight THC products have not been evaluated or approved by the FDA to be safe in any context. They can be marketed in ways that put the public health at risk and should be kept out of reach of children and pets. Adverse events include vomiting, hallucination, trouble standing, loss of consciousness. In order to get these effects, dangerous household chemicals are added to the hemp, and this process is not controlled or regulated. I visited the CBD Kratom website this weekend and was told it had to be eighteen years old to view their products. When I drove by their store, their products were proudly on display in the front window. These products included candy and soda made from Kratom and CBD. These products were in a window covered with an eight-foot-tall marijuana leaf. The store had reclaimed wood shelving, faux marijuana plants, and a hip vibe akin to a local coffee shop, a place that teens would want to hang out at. Sadly, on Friday, the kids had already discovered this store as they walked into Wayne and took selfies in front of the giant marijuana leaf and added them to their Snapchats. The store claims in their press release that they want to be part of the South Wayne community, but they in fact have no idea who the South Wayne community is because they sneakily and illegally opened the store without the proper licenses or permits. They avoided letting the community know where their store was and what they were selling because they knew that we would oppose it. In March of 2020, Ward Seven residents in Garrett Hill fought successfully to prevent a dispensary from opening. Had we been given notice that this establishment was going to open in South Wayne, we would have voiced our concerns as well. Instead, they played the game of asking for forgiveness, not permission. Having this store in our community normalizes drug use for our children. It makes these substances look hip and trendy, and makes them easy access, easily accessible with curbside pickup. For now, for fun on a Friday night, our seniors in high school could pick up Kratom sodas and Delta Eight salted caramels on their way home from school. Their own website warns users to take it slow when first using THCO and lets customers know that this substance will show up on a drug test. When have we ever known teenagers to take it slow? We cannot bury our heads in the sand. We cannot wait for the PA Legislature to make these substances banned. We have to be proactive and keep the store closed. We have to create ordinances to protect the small-town charm and community for the safety of our children. There are dozens of empty businesses in Wayne. What is to prevent other businesses, like sports betting, adult stores, and strip clubs from opening on Lancaster Avenue? The Board of Commissioners met in May of 2020 to discuss if they should impose regulations related to marijuana distribution for recreational use. They also discussed the idea of safe injection sites for heroin users. Radnor is fifteen miles away from one of the nation's worst cities for heroin and opiate abuse. We rank fifth nationally for overdose deaths. So now is the time for you to act. The CBD Kratom store should not open. We should not expose our children to drugs that are outlawed in nineteen states. We need you to create ordinances now to protect the safety and character of our community. Our children deserve this from our leaders. I will email you the letter so you can see all of the members that signed it. I'm also going to send it to the zoning ordinance people as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Stern, 202 Midland Avenue. This one. I want to thank the township officials and the Commissioners for taking swift action to close a store that was opened without permits. I do appreciate that and recognize that it may take some time for you to work through the process as Mr. Rice laid out for everyone here. I also wanted to, I don't know the status of the business development person that the board was considering hiring, but recognizing that we do have a lot of empty storefronts in Radnor, and recognizing that this business owner did not have to rent to this person, that it would be great if you do have this business development person, bring them on board quickly so that they can work with our other storefront owners, property owners, to cultivate the kind of tenants and community businesses in Radnor that we would all appreciate. Finally, a few years ago, there was a sign on a bar on Garrett Avenue, and that was, there was a concern around the size of the sign, did it have the proper approvals? And it was taken down rather quickly. So I appreciate the request for the signs to come down, and I would appreciate that that follow-through on this property, you know, occurs while when signs go up without permission, they should come down. Thank you.
Clark Engel, I'm a Radnor Township resident. Sorry you're going to hear a lot of repetitive things tonight, but I guess that comes with the territory. I'm here tonight to voice my concern and displeasure that the CBD Kratom store is open, is opening or is attempting to open in the former Starbucks location in Wayne. Like many people, I just found out about this on Friday. My initial reaction, like so many other residents I know you've already heard from, was shock, anger, disbelief, and frustration. I have four kids, three of which are still of school age, who do or will, when they're older, hang out in downtown Wayne. I immediately started doing online research on zoning regulations, permitting, researching who owns the property, who owns, who owns the business, where permits filed. What is Kratom? What types of stores are allowed in, in the Wayne Business Overlay District? What qualifies as a specialty shop? How can this be allowed within one thousand feet of two schools? How do you establish a drug-free school zone? And on and on. After numerous hours of this, I thought to myself, why am I doing this? We have elected officials who volunteered to serve the community in this capacity. I realize some of you may be new to this board, and I realize there are a number of question marks as to whether this business followed the proper channels for approval. Nonetheless, I still can't fathom how this is even a gray area in 2022. Other towns around the country have taken preemptive steps to make sure this doesn't happen. Why hasn't Radnor? I'm sure I can't open a manufacturing facility or a topless bar in downtown Wayne. Someone had the foresight to make sure the zoning addressed that. Why not this? Why? This is not some sleepy, under-the-radar issue. I never imagined that I would need to come to a Board of Commissioners meeting to make my opinion heard on an issue that should be a no-brainer when it comes to public safety. But I now feel that I do because of two things I learned online. One, that Kratom and some of the other products that this store sells are not safe. These gateway drugs can be addicting and lead people to a more, to more hardcore drug use. The more alarming thing was an article I read in the Main Line Times from September 2021 that there's already been debate here at, at these board meetings as far back as March about a marijuana dispensary and a safer drug, a safe drug injection site. Yet apparently, no zoning regs have changed to address it. Yet the most alarming thing, I'm sad to say, were your comments, Commissioner Mulrooney, in which you were quoted as saying, "I caution us not to be the 'not-in-the-my-backyard' township, especially when these aren't even laws on the books yet." Well, you're damn right. I don't want it in my backyard or anywhere on the face of the earth, for that matter. If you think legalizing drugs or making it safe for people to inject so they don't get diseases from dirty nozzles is a good idea or leads to less crime, you're delusional. These utopian ideas don't work. Just look at San Francisco.
I'm John Leach Iardello. I live here in the township. I'm actually born here in Radnor as well. First, I just want to describe what the store is. It's only been a few days, but they describe it as CBD Kratom, right? CBD is legal. You can buy CBD cream at, at Walgreens, you can buy it on Amazon, right? It's, it's, it's not a drug. You can buy it anywhere, right? But the store has a giant marijuana sign on Lancaster Avenue. As someone said, it's got a five-foot marijuana plant in the front, front of the store. So, but they don't have, they don't sell marijuana. So why would they be advertising with the marijuana leaf if they don't sell marijuana, right? CBD's kind of marijuana, but not really. The reason they do that is it's just a bait and switch, right? They market with marijuana, making people think that it's a marijuana store. I took a picture of, of the sign on the front door. It actually had things like "No medical card required" was on the front door, making it seem like you could buy legal marijuana there. But they don't sell marijuana there because it's illegal for them to sell marijuana there. The marijuana is just a bait. The marijuana sign, the, the, the tree, it's a bait. You go in the store and you say, "Give me marijuana." And they say, "I don't have marijuana, but try this Kratom," or the Delta Eight, or any of these other drugs. It's a bait and switch. That's their business model. Like a scumball, street-corner drug dealer, you go to your drug dealer and say, "Give me some weed." They say, "I don't have any weed, but try this other stuff." That's their business model. Yeah? This is actually a very good parallel to OxyContin, right? What was OxyContin? It started off as a legal drug. They found a loophole in a way to sell legal OxyContin to people who were unsuspecting. They got hooked. You know, the, the company made billions, and people got hooked on the drug, and, you know, we all know what happened with OxyContin. This is OxyContin 2.0, right? They market marijuana, you wind up with Kratom. As people have said, it's dangerous. Mayo Clinic, the first thing you see when you Google it is Kratom, unsafe according to Mayo Clinic, right? It's, it's OxyContin 2.0. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Kathy Agnew, 325 Pembroke Avenue, former Commissioner of the Third Ward. Hi, Anne Marie, I'm sure you're doing a great job. This is, of course, about the store, but in a larger context. Some of you know my favorite, one of my favorite things is administrative estoppel. And so, and I think it should be applied in this case. This is not a business that applied for some permits and got some things wrong or made some misrepresenta, or representations that they were incorrect about. This is a business, a sophisticated business. They're out of St. Louis. They're not, you know, somebody in the neighborhood who just decided to do this. This is a business that has counsel. They know that they're supposed to apply for things. I frankly, I don't, regardless of what I feel about this business, I would say this about if they were opening up an electric light store. You have come in and tried to create facts on the ground, which then they try to cure. I think when a business comes in like this and applies for nothing, absolutely nothing, they should not be permitted to cure. No matter what kind of business it is. It is an affront to the boards, and an affront to the townships, it's an affront to everybody, all, all the staff, that they don't have to do what everybody else has to do. So as, it was, like, the term was used, create facts on the ground, and then they'll work from there. It should be no. When they come in and then they try to do, it should be no. Not only can we not rely, we couldn't rely on what you said because you wouldn't even make representations. That should be basically parallel and akin to a misrepresentation. They should be denied. If they sue, then they go to court. You apply administrative estoppel, administrative estoppel, and/or the court could say, "We're going to use judicial estoppel because you cannot use the courts to come in when you duped another government body." That's my defense, John. I've said it many times. I wish this board would adopt it in, in many other circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Bonderberger, South Aberdeen Avenue. I just want to thank former Commissioner Agnew for really touching on some important points. I know several of you are new to elected office and probably don't have a lot of experience in, in a lot of these matters. And I know the community does not have a lot of experience in dealing with these kinds of matters. For more than twenty years, I've spent every day of my life, including an hour ago, working with elected bodies at the municipal, county, and state level across the Commonwealth and across the nation. And I can tell you a few things from my experience that I think are relevant not just to you as Commissioners, but to my fellow residents. Number one, follow the money. It is hard to believe that a large corporation like this picked that spot out of the blue and dropped a pin in, in South Wayne. Doesn't happen. Number two, we got a great outline of the process from our Solicitor, for which I'm grateful. Thank you, sir. But that is the process, and you are the policymakers who determine that process. It's time to look at changing the process in this case. And I think former Commissioner Agnew gave us some great opportunities for you to take that action. Third, I would highly recommend that everyone who's interested in this matter file public records requests to this body as often as possible to get copies of those records that the Solicitor talks about as they come in. Filings, applications, licenses, and so on. To go back to point one, which is follow the money. Somebody has been hired to get this through, or will be hired to get it through. I find it hard to believe that no one was on the phone today that wasn't hired locally to do that, and it's important to follow that money to see where that money landed and, and brought us to where we are today. And the last point I'll make is that these types of things don't come out of left field. Again, there's always something behind the scenes, and I reiterate what I said previously, which is, the rules are what they are. Again, our Solicitor did a nice job outlining them, but you make the rules. And I think our community here today is letting you know that it's time to change those rules. Thank you.
My name's Heather Gill. I'm a Ward Three resident of over eighteen years, and I'm concerned about this new store that opened where the old Starbucks is relocated next to the beer yard. It is my understanding that the store opened without any notification to the township, without opening a certificate of occupancy, business license, approval from the Design Review Board, looked at signage. They also did not file for any miscellaneous permits such as electrical or plumbing. I find it interesting that the building owner, who has owned this type of store before, would not be knowledgeable on the type of paperwork that is required to open a business. I have various questions for the township and our Commissioners. Does this business even meet the zoning requirements? For instance, there are two buildings on one property. Is there a recorded deed that allows for this to exist? If zoning approval is required, would the entire parcel have to be brought up to the zoning code? There's various aspects such as stormwater management, impervious, and building coverage, building parking setbacks, buffer requirements, et cetera. Has the township thought of how this business would affect the wonderful Wayne Business Association businesses and community events? How would this business safely dispose of waste for the site, given what they sell? Has the township considered the traffic impacts that could occur along Lancaster Avenue? Has the township thought about if this business would negatively impact our police department, their staff, and budget? Most importantly, has the township considered the negative impacts of our local school students that walk to Wayne? The business is five hundred and thirty-two feet away from St. Catherine's and six hundred and forty-seven feet from the Radnor Middle School. Just last week, the high school held an assembly on the negative effects of various drugs, including drugs that are sold at this store. How can we advise our students of the negative effects of these substances, yet we allow this type of business into our community? One of the Commissioners stated in an email that this is a matter for the zoning hearing board and not the Board of Commissioners, and wished us luck. While I agree that this matter is for the zoning hearing board, as it appears it does not meet various zoning requirements, I was taken back that a Commissioner does not believe this is an issue for the board. It certainly is an issue for the Commissioners, local school district, police, and Radnor community, specifically residents of Ward Three. We elect Commissioners to represent and listen to the concerns and needs of the community. We are here tonight asking for your help, asking to protect our kids and community. I look to both the zoning hearing board and Commissioner to put forth resolutions, zoning amendments, and other measures in place to address this immediately. I will leave you with this tonight. The owners of the store were quoted in an article in April 2020 stating, "If a town doesn't necessarily want us there, we are not in the business of fighting to be there." I wish that store owner would live up to their word and relocate to a community that actually wants them. Thank you.
There's a back lot behind my church and behind this establishment that kinda connects all of them together. I am, um, I'm just dismayed that, that something like this can happen. You know, we've all been wondering, what's gonna go in there? What's gonna go into the old Starbucks? And, you know, there's paper on the windows and, and we, we wait in anticipation and see a giant pot leaf. And then, I, I was in a conversation, I passed by, totally lost my train of thought with the conversation I was having because I, I could not believe what was going on in, in my community that I live in. I've only been here seven and a half years, but it certainly doesn't represent what I've seen. I think all of us have noticed over the last five or six years that there's a, a lot of polarization in politics. This commission will find that there is unity here, that wherever you fall, Democrat, Republican, or somewhere in between, we are unified in not wanting this establishment in our community. I urge you to take action. All I've heard is, well, we legally can't do this or can't do that, and we're, we don't want to get sued. Um, and I want to say, figure it out.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Doyle, and I live on Meadowbrook Circle. First off, I would like to wish the Radnor Boys Basketball Team good luck in their playoff game against Lower Marion tonight. I've spoken to many people who wanted to attend this meeting, but they were going to the game. I'm sure many of us here would like to be at the game as well, but there are important matters to deal with in our town. And I told them that we would represent their views to all of you. But first, I would like to share the views of some others in their own words. It's sneaky. First, you start taking it here and there, then every day, then twice a day, then the amount goes up and up with tolerance. It's pretty cheap, even when you're taking a lot. I just look around and wonder what it's like not to take anything. I see these people who have simple lives, and they seem so happy. There's a lot of scratching, restless leg syndrome. You know what that is? Really uncomfortable. Feels like your legs want to be stretched out of your body. These comments are from people who took kratom, a product that is to be sold in our old Starbucks building, less than a quarter mile from St. Catherine of Siena School and Radnor Middle School. The product comes in bags of salted caramels, just like a bag of candy that our kids would buy at CVS, and in bottles that look like Snapple, just like our kids would buy at Wawa. The owners of this store proudly display these items in their windows right now, right now, for our kids to see on their Friday walks through Wayne, right now. And what about CBD? Oh, that's supposed to help people, right? Well, a study published in the Journal of American Medical Association Pediatrics concluded the following. Cannabis use disorder is a common comorbidity and risk marker for self-harm, all-cause mortality, and death by unintended overdose, and homicide among youths with mood disorders. My guess is that, given the experiences of virtual learning, masks, and lack of normality experienced by most of our youth over the past two years, most of them now have mood disorders. So I have a few questions for you, our commissioners, as we meet about the opening of this CBD kratom store. We have some information from the solicitor about how this happened, so what are you going to do to stop it? And please take that sign down. Every day that sign is up, another day, a child learns about these harmful products. Don't let this business in our town.
So, um, making comments over there, I need you either at the mic to make a comment. You can leave those with us for sure. Thank you. Can you come to the mic?
That flyer was at Jules Pizza, where our kids go in to get a slice of pizza. I'm 55 years old and I have never heard of that product. Our 12-year-olds, our 10-year-olds now know what it is because of these flyers in our pizza shops and that sign that is along Lancaster Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peggy Sekonic. I'm on South Wayne Avenue, but I'm reading on behalf of Jennifer Carter at St. David's Circle. On Friday, during the traditional Radnor Middle School Walk to Wayne, students were taking selfies and group photos in front of the large weed leaf that adorns the new CBD kratom store in downtown Wayne. The display in the window of the store featured candy and soda items containing CBD, kratom, and Delta Eight. The substances are legal, but with a quick Google, it is easy to grasp that kratom and Delta Eight are substances that we don't want easily accessible to teens in our community. Both are illegal in many states because of adverse outcomes. The marketing technique immediately reminded me of Juul vaping devices. Juul makes e-cigarettes that resemble flash drives and work by vaporizing a nicotine-based liquid. The devices are colorful and easy to hide. The liquid cartridges contain fun kid flavors such as bubble gum, mango, cotton candy. The company advertised on Instagram. You needed to be 18 to purchase. Thousands of teens in the U.S. became addicted and still are. We won't know the long-term consequences of this disease for years to come. I do not know that this legal, easily accessible product has devastated many teens' lives with add, with addiction and increased depression. The fact that this CBD kratom store is opening within walking distance from our schools is especially concerning. The CBD kratom store is actively marketing to minors based on their signage and displays. Many of the Radnor High School seniors are turning 18 and are legal to buy items from the store and share with friends and siblings. This is a slippery slope for our young generation. Just because something is legal does not mean it is not harmful. Greed should not outweigh the well-being of our children. CBD is readily available across our nation and has been proven to help many medical problems. I'm not here to advocate for or against CBD. However, did you know that CBD is sold as a supplement, not a medication? For this reason, we do not readily know what other elements of the CBD you purchase might contain. The FDA does not regulate the safety and purity of dietary supplements, so you can't be sure that the product you buy has active ingredients at the dose listed on the label. Yes, CBD is a helpful supplement to many, but it is not regulated. Something to think about. Finally, according to, to many, this store did not go through the proper channels prior to, uh, popping up and should not be allowed to open in its current location near our schools. Wayne has a charming, small-town feel, and this establishment does not meet our standards. A giant weed leaf display in the middle of our family-oriented town, uh, excuse me, middle of our family-oriented township is depressing.
Is there any other public comment, please?
My name is Louise Palmacio. I don't live in this town, but my mother did, and my daughter does, and my four grandchildren. Now frankly, I think this whole thing is appalling, that this store managed to, uh, come in through the back door, so to speak, and get away with, or tried to get away with breaking all the rules that this panel or maybe you set up in this township, building codes and sanitary codes and whatever. Uh, the very fact that they tried that is quite interesting, so it's, it's, it, it says all about them right from the get-go. But to have this kind of store in this environment is disgusting. Now, there's St. Catherine's, there's schools all around, there's Walk to, uh, Wayne on Fridays, these kids, I've driven in this town with, with these kids all over the place. They're all over the place, and they're just starting to learn their independence. They're just starting to feel like grownups coming into town with their little friends. And they walk down past the store to go to Rita's Water Ice Nout. It's appalling, and you people should do something about it. It doesn't fit in this environment. There's enough influences with these kids on the streets today. They don't need this, right in their faces. Uh, mothers walk with their strollers. I used to walk this town with all four of them in my, in their strollers. This shop should not be in this town. It is a wrong fit. Not to mention, I feel it's a safety issue. And it's a safety issue because we don't know the environment of the people that need this kind of stuff. Who's going to come into this town to buy it? Where are they going to come from? Who are they? You know, what dispositions do they have? Are they nutcases? Will they try to, try to kidnap one of those little kids that walk by there? We don't know. And not to mention, a situation where if some of them are smart, they're gonna look around and see teenagers, there's a teenage population. So what do you think's gonna happen? Some teenager's gonna get wise and say, "Well, you know, if I slip you some money, you'll go in and buy some for me." That's another slippery slope that could occur from this thing. It's outrageous. It's, it doesn't fit in this town. And Garrett Hill, I don't know what those people did in that town, but they, they got rid of it. It wasn't allowed to open there. I don't know whether any of you know what they did. I sure would like to find out, because if they got rid of it, why can't we? I mean, it's a little town, Garrett Hill, it's not a big city, right? Am I right about this? It's a little town.
It's Radnor Township.
It's what?
It's, it's our township.
Oh, it's, uh, there you go.
Very small business district.
Why should our township want it? There's too many children in this town. There's new families with babies and strollers. I've, I've been in this town long enough. It, 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 it's, it doesn't fit, guys. It doesn't fit. It's wrong. It really is.
I just wanted to know if I could read a comment from another resident who is unfortunately out of state?
Yeah, if you can let us know who you are and who you're reading for.
Yes, correct. My name's Heather Gill. I'm a resident of Ward Three. I'm reading on behalf of Kelly Martin. She is a 6th Ward resident. And she wrote, "Did Radnor's Design Review Board approve the 12-foot-high marijuana leaf wraps in the old Starbucks location? How about the larger-than-life soda bottle and candy wrappers? If this was a serious store offering medicinal products, they wouldn't need the building to be a billboard to lure people in. Is this the size and type of signage approved in Radnor for all businesses? Is this the new norm? Regardless of the legality of the project sold in the shop, did design, did the Design Review Board approve the signage? Is the property zoned for two separate commercial standalone businesses? Did business, their agent, or the property owner seek a variance? Is it grandfathered? Will the shop ever, if it's legalized in Pennsylvania, sell recreational cannabis? Have the questions been asked of the business owners or their agents? The chain currently advertises curbside pickup of their entire menu for their new Wayne location on Lancaster Avenue. Is this approved? The shop advertised on their truck and online that they are a cannabis dispensary. Is this an approved location? Radnor's code allows for medicinal marijuana to be sold in a standalone location 1,000 feet from the school property, in a building with two entrances, a loading dock, and the business owner must own the building outright with no mortgage. If this business is advertising themselves as a cannabis dispensary, shouldn't they meet these very simple requirements? Did the business owners or their agents inquire about Radnor's zoning codes or certificate of occupancy? What steps did Radnor Township take after Commissioner Jake Abel inquired about the rumor of their business on January 27th? Did Radnor shut the businesses down? What are the next steps? Thank you for keeping all residents and parents in the loop on this. When Radnor residents fought to keep the middle school in downtown Wayne, they likely didn't foresee a shop advertising products which provide a similar high to recovering heroin addicts as their neighbor to our impressionable, impressionable middle schoolers just steps away from Radnor Middle School, St. Catherine's, the ABC House, St. Mary's, and St. Catherine's Churches.
Is there additional public comment? Okay, well, I-
Can I ask you some questions?
We don't, we don't ask and answer questions of public comment. I do encourage everybody to reach out to us individually. Um, you can also reach out to staff, and in a different environment, we are able to answer more questions. So, um, you know, let's keep talking about it. I'm really grateful that everybody came out. If there's no other public comment, I'm gonna move to our next item. Should I do five minutes to get that? I'm gonna make a motion for a five-minute recess to allow the room to reset.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If we could get the commissioners to the dais, I'd like to call to order. Hi, good evening. We are going to reconvene. Again, I would like to thank the community for coming out, allowing us to hear in person, face-to-face, the concerns of the residents. And we will continue to do all we can to look into the issue and move forward. We're moving on to the consent agenda. According to the Sunshine Act, I'm allowed to allow comment at the consent agenda because we vote on it. But I'd like to do public comment first, and then I'll ask commissioners if they would like to remove an item. Is there any public comment on an item on the consent agenda? Great. Are there any items that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? I'm not hearing one. So I would like to have a motion to vote on the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved and second. I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's approved unanimously. Bill, I'm going to move to reports of the manager.
Okay, happy to. Thank you, Madam President. There are two items to touch on quickly. I'll take care of item A, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Tate to step through item B. Understand that we have some more lengthier items later on the agenda. We will make this quick. But we were excited to announce to both the board and the public that thanks to some reshuffling of duties within the Finance Department and thanks to Melissa Kahn and her excitement and energy that she would like to dedicate towards the township's energy and sustainability-related projects, she stepped up and asked if we would consider her to step into the Sustainability and Grant Coordinator role or to take on those tasks. So we were able to fill another vacant seat in Finance, which allowed some of Melissa's other duties to be reassigned and freed up her bandwidth to be able to tackle some of those issues. So we're excited to let the board and the public know that Melissa Kahn will serve as the Township Sustainability Coordinator. And she will be working with both the EAC and the members of the Green Team as they relate to, you know, the renewable energy legislation that was adopted by the board last year, as well as any other projects that flow through the EAC in years to come. And at the same time, Melissa has already jumped in headfirst on several different grant opportunities. Some of those grants are around projects that we're already looking at. We're taking a look at potential funding to help with the comp plan, potential funding to help with some of our stormwater projects, and funding perhaps to help fund some of the departmental capital as it relates to some of the energy-related projects that are in the to-do list from that plan. So she started working on some of those things already. And we're excited to... First of all, I'd like to thank her for volunteering to step into that role. And as I explained to her, I'm super excited that she's our person because Melissa is always someone who is very professional, detail-oriented, and organized. And any project that she's been asked to do in her time here with the township has been very successful. So I'm excited that she's the one working on it because I know it'll be good. So we're happy to move forward with that. I know she's already met with the EAC and the Green Team, and they've gotten the ball rolling there as well. So that's the update there. And then transitioning to the 2021 Finance Recap. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you, Madam President. A couple weeks ago, the board provided the information on the Finance Recap for 2021. Just real quick, very happy to summarize that the results in 2021 did exceed our budget expectations. If you recall, going into 2021, in the midst of the pandemic, we were... There was a lot of uncertainty. And our budget, we held the line with taxes, fees, and very conservative projections just to ensure, you know, that we were not over or underestimating the outcomes. And as it turned out, we did have the fund balance at the time to help carry us through. We were expected to dip into that fund balance to the tune of about $1.6 million. And a number of factors throughout 2021 helped us actually come out much the opposite. We were favorable by a surplus of about $2.8 million, a swing of about $4.4 million in total. That's primarily the result of better-than-expected real estate transfer taxes. We saw a nice rebound in the business taxes. And there was some of the Federal American Recovery Plan Act monies, ARPA for short. That also helped to stabilize the budget. It's important to note that the federal money, and as we have talked about before and we continue to talk about, our fund balance policy. That money helped bring the general fund balance back into compliance with our policy. And along with the other results, we're building back our healthy reserve. So in a nutshell, that kind of summarizes how we did for the year. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Tate?
I'll just say congratulations to Melissa. I think that's great news. And congratulations on the great financial report. I know it's a team effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And congratulations to Melissa. Great, thank you. And congratulations to Melissa, and congratulations to all of us for some nice financial news tonight. That is available on the website for a review, am I right? Mr. Tate, is the financial report... That's already been published.
That's posted. I'll double-check and make sure we have it out there under the Finance section.
Yes, I think it was posted, so anybody who wants to see more detail, please check the radner.com website. Okay, we're on to committee reports. The first item is the appointment of Angelika Karyanas to the Board of Health for a four-year term ending December 31st. Can I have a motion to appoint Ms. Karyanas to the Board of Health?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any board comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the appointment of Andy Santilla to the Parks and Rec Board for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
And is there any comment from a board commissioners? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 2022-21, 130 to 132 Calvary's Lane, a request final minor lot-line change.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Calvary's and his attorney, Mr. Canelia, were here last week, or last meeting to present the plan in caucus. This is a very minor plan. It's literally moving a lot line on a piece of paper. The applicant has agreed to comply with other requirements within the review letters. There are a couple waivers that Mr. Canelia will step through again.
Thank you.
You may recall, as Steve mentioned, this is an existing two lots. All that's happening here is that the lot line is being moved so that this garage will now entirely be on this lot here, which is termed Lot 130, and then you have Lot 132. Currently, there is no residence on either of the lots. The three waivers had to deal with the traditional waiver regarding showing principal buildings on adjacent properties. There is one regarding contour lines, and another one regarding large trees, which if these lots were ever developed, they would have to comply with those regulations for grading permit application and for approval of a grading permit. So as shown on the resolution, it's conditioned upon if a grading permit is ever applied for, that the contour lines and the large trees would have to be shown on the plan.
So I'm going to make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any board comment? Any staff comment? Okay, any public comment? Great. I will call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Passed unanimously. The next item is 816 Gaylor Road, request waiver of the stormwater management ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Thank you. Is there any... Steve, are you going to lead this in?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So 816 Gaylor Drive is wishing to perform some slight improvements. They cannot infiltrate according to our stormwater ordinance requirements. Based on that situation, the resident is required to come to the board to request a waiver from the infiltration requirement of stormwater management.
My name's Edward Stassen, resident 816 Gaylor Drive. As Steve accurately pointed out, I'll look into the documentations. My ground unfortunately does not perk. It got a zero on the perk test, so looking for a waiver to basically allow to place a back patio on my yard. I went through major renovations over the past year through the pandemic. Throughout the process, I did put in spreaders in the front yard, and I did put in drainage. So I get a lot of runoff from Goshen Road and everything above me, so we are trying to minimize the impact, and the goal will be to put some vegetation in as well. But ultimately, the ground's completely impervious. Happy to answer any questions. So I don't feel any impact is being incurred if I put more concrete or hardscape there. And obviously, I'm below any other ratios that would be required for the amount of acreage that I have.
So...
Just a quick question. Are you in a floodplain?
I'm sorry?
Are you in a floodplain?
No.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. Hi, here I am.
A little hard to keep track.
I know. It's hard with that thing there. So thank you so much for coming. So I'm Lisa. I'm your... Lisa Braskin, I'm your commissioner. I live up on Goshen Road. Yeah, we've met, so sorry.
It's your water coming down.
It's my water coming down. I apologize for that. So I just have a quick question. So you already put in spreaders, and you put in... So there's drainage in the back, and I know in the front as well, and that was part of the project. You... I mean, you basically... I know you built on a footprint of an existing home, and it looks beautiful. You've done a really nice job.
Still going, but thank you.
It looks nice. But you already did some initial stormwater as part of that project, and that's what Steve is referencing, that you did come before us before. So the patio, was the patio part of your initial plan, and you're just getting to it now? Or was this an addition to your plan?
There's an existing slab that's there, that we're just going to go over it. I believe at one time we did discuss, and I thought there were plans, to be honest, I can't find them, where my architect did discuss that there was possibly an outbuilding that I would still have to come for approval for a building permit. But in those numbers, and when she did the calculations, on what we would have in there, it would be calculated in the spreader. Oh, okay, anyway. What I do have in the backyard also is a large drain, because when I bought the house, I was unaware. It just constantly got flooded in its prior porch. So I do have a large drain there that does collect the runoff. So in the last year that I've been there, I've never had an issue. I don't see any erosion. So that drain, if we just move it forward, which we will, will capture any water, and I don't see any impact that will occur.
You're increasing the drain, like you're increasing that space, the size of the drain, or...
The drain is... How do I get this thing to go? I know the other guy had it.
Ian, can we get the overhead?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to be recognized. You've already done, I think, a lot of stormwater mitigation to the property.
So in orange here, there are two large drains I put in the backyard, two feet wide by probably a total linear foot of 200 feet because of the runoff that we were getting. So we brought in dirt to slow it down. We planted grass. And then the yellow in the front, you can see that's the spreader. So everything from the drains, everything from the gutters, everything goes through the system and ultimately filtrates through the spreader system. So even though the ground doesn't perk, the goal was, we'll let you slow down the water. So that's everything we've done, and probably everything we're really able to do.
Yeah, so your property, you're like below a hill and then on a hill, so it's sloped down, yeah. Okay, that was my only question. I just wanted everyone to be aware, you already have done stormwater mitigation on the property and whatnot, so, okay, great. Thank you very much.
But just to clarify, no additional... You're not... I think I heard her question was, you're not expanding the water management system. Do you feel what you have is sufficient for the new piece that you're adding?
Correct.
Okay.
But we are expanding the hardscape. It's kind of funny you use the word impervious coverage when you're dealing with something that doesn't perk, which is by definition impervious. So putting more pavers down.
Okay. Are there any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, I just have one. So I know it's all impervious by testing, but the impervious coverage is how we zone things around here. So you're still staying under that 20%?
Yes.
Is what I... I have something very close, but you're still under it?
Yes. The numbers were providing what was submitted, so we sit on an acre of land.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Do you have any staff comment? Is there public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Want to post? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So a question, I guess, how do I proceed now?
You're going to talk to Mr. Norcini.
We can talk tomorrow, sir. We're going to process your grading permit, and once that's... Then you can apply for your building permit for all the hardscape.
I'll give you a call tomorrow, or if that works.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item E, Resolution 2022-11, approving funding in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to be paid from the township's contractually obligated set aside for reimbursement to the Willow's Park Preserve for installation of a fire sprinkler system and fire panel at the Willow's Mansion. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So can somebody on staff lead us in on this one?
So commissioners, last meeting, you approved... It was brought up that the WPP had requested that $200,000, and the solicitor was directed to create a resolution memorializing that.
The township has an existing lease with the WPP, and it provides for funding. This is part of that funding that's been requested, the $200,000.
And I know that the Willow Executive Director and board members are here from the Willow's Park Preserve. Do commissioners have any questions for staff, or we could bring up a board member?
A couple.
Sure.
So I guess this would go to either Will or Krista, or maybe Howard. Is Howard here?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Can one of you come to the mic?
Yeah, one of you could come up, just one or two questions. But before I start, let me just ask a housekeeping question. When we issue, if this is approved, and we issue the $200,000 from our bucket, do we write them a check, and then they can do whatever they want with it? I mean, do they pick the contractor? Does it come to us? Who pays the contractor? Who pays the person that installs?
It's their contractor.
So they pay them?
Correct.
Okay. Could one of you come up, because I got a question.
So I'm going to piggyback on that. Are we... Because it says to not to exceed, are we reimbursing the work that's done? We're not handing them a $200,000 check, but they would submit their invoices for reimbursement up to that amount, am I right?
Well, I think what Bill had recommended on the funding, and it's in the resolution, so there'll be an initial... Once we see what the estimates are, there'll be an initial payment, reimbursement payment from the township, and a half of what the estimated cost is, and then any final payment would be upon receipt of the actual invoices for the work that gets completed.
Thank you. I think Krista now. Krista, if you could come up?
Yeah.
Why don't we start with you? Thank you.
Thanks. So a while back, you had a slate fundraiser, is that correct?
That's correct.
For the Whispering Patio, is that correct?
The Whispering Terrace, yes.
Yes, and how much was raised?
Yeah, so we launched the Great Slate Challenge in 2020, and the goals were to raise $500,000, and the project's scope and objectives, and I'll read off the copy that was in the website, and all the marketing collateral that went out to prospective donors. It was, "Please help us in raising $500,000 to build a new Whispering Terrace, and to restore and expand our existing terraces," and it goes on to describe the project's scope. So we found ourselves about a year later, in 2021, having raised 6% of those goals. I was a contributor, the board members were. I personally contributed over $2,000 to that campaign, which put me in the top five. But we decided, since we were at 6%, a little over $30,000, that was enough funding to accomplish what was part of the scope, which was the restoration of existing terraces. But there was still a big gap between the goals to be able to construct a new terrace. So the board made a decision to put a pause on it while we just reassessed what we can do differently to achieve the project's objectives. We weren't comfortable asking donors to contribute through this specific campaign until we had a clear path forward on how we were going to reach the goals.
So let me just make my point here. So I think everyone here wants to see you guys succeed. I mean, I want to succeed more than anything. You spend time, this board, this board, your board, and it is a true treasure of the township. My concern is that you raised, and this is coming from a resident who made a donation, you raised $30,000. It's a significant amount. I understand that we had COVID, and, you know, you give money, you want your name on a slate that you did it, and it's not there. So my concern is that we're going to issue money, $200,000, and that money may... I believe that it probably will, but based on this trend, that you're raising money from the public, from, I don't know, 30, 40, you know, those people, and that money didn't go... It really didn't go for what it was supposed to do. It was supposed to be a slate. It was supposed to be on the Whispering Terrace. I mean, you can say, well, we have to change it, but if I gave that money, and this is, you know, coming, and I'm just regurgitating what I've heard, I would be, what's the word, you know, upset, concerned. And now I'm concerned that we're going to issue $200,000. You're going to get it, and I believe that you're going to write those checks, but at this point now, I'm just...
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm looking at the... All I can do is look at the track record.
Do you have a question in there?
No, I do have a question, okay? I mean, this is a $200,000 vote.
I get it, but if you could ask the question.
Pardon?
If you could ask a question.
No, it's commissioner comment, so... And I'm making my comments. My comments will be a comment and/or a question. Thanks. So my issue is that this money doesn't get there, or part of it gets there, and now we're in a situation where, I don't know. So if you want to respond to that?
No, I do. Thank you, because there's nothing that we value more than the trust of the community and those that would give us a donation. I would respectfully disagree with you that the money didn't go for something that was within the project's scope. The, you know, purchase a slate was never intended to be literal. Your name was not going to be on a slate that you would go and you'd walk on the new terrace, and you would see your name engraved on the slate. It was never intended to be that literal. But I will say that nothing that I do, or that the decisions that we make are always done in consultation with third parties. I can have my own opinion about what was in scope or not in scope, but we always consult with a third-party accounting firm. We'll go through an independent audit and review with another firm, and then we consult with our counsel. So until we check all those boxes, you know, we don't make determinations about restricted funds.
Okay, it just seems to me that you had a fundraiser based on one thing, and I just... My opinion, from what I've seen, is that it... Misrepresentation... There was issues with COVID, I get it, but it just didn't seem to go there in the manner that, from what I read, that if I gave money, and I didn't, but I know someone that did, that was just concerned, and that raises that red flag.
Well, we certainly want anybody that had a concern to come to us. We did talk about this in our April newsletter. There's probably things that we can do differently and better in terms of communication, and we are always looking to improve. But again, the scope said to build a new Whispering Terrace, and to restore and expand our existing terraces. And that was within all of the marketing collateral that we used for this particular campaign.
Would you be open to having the township pay the bill? You contracted out and having the township write the check, or no? So the township is going to just give you $200,000, so that's correct.
Yeah, and the way it worked, I would expect that it would work the way it did when the township reimbursed us for startup costs. We will...
It's a reimbursement, or...
It was a reimbursement.
Is this going to be a reimbursement, or this is...
This would be a reimbursement. No, we... This would be a reimbursement, no, we will get a check. We will execute the project and we'll get a check from the township similar to what was done with the startup costs.
I'd be more comfortable if it was a reimbursement.
Well, we, we're going to get a check.
Showing the, the reimbursement's in the resolution.
So it is a reimbursement?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said that they're going to get a check.
No, but for the cost.
We're going to cut them a check and then they spend it?
No.
Okay, so there's a check in balances.
That was never said, yeah.
Okay.
There's a.
That's what I heard, that's what I thought I heard you guys say.
If you look at the, at the resolution language, it does allow for an initial installment payment will be made to the Willow's Park Preserve in the amount of one-half of the estimated cost for the improvement to be made at the start of the project. That follows upon where it says that it will be a, a reimbursement up to and not to exceed $200,000. So they'll get some upfront to be able to engage, I would imagine, their contractors?
Yeah.
And then, and then submit invoices for reimbursement.
And I wanted to reiterate that we, again, we put it on pause just because of the gap between where we were and where we wanted to be. We are still looking at other methods to get there, silent fundraising, perhaps finding a matching donor. It's still, I just want to make clear, it's still a priority of our board to have a new terrace.
How much of that 30,000 has been spent?
We spent 23,000 on the refurbishment, which included installing new flagstone and we took out what were flower beds and trees and installed new flagstone and then refurbished the existing terrace. And then we have done the grading that would support an eventual terrace, new terrace.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have questions for Ms. Hickson? No, you're good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, I just have one comment and everybody knows it, but just so the public knows it as well, is that in order to get their certificate of occupancy, they have to have these sprinklers. So they're, they're totally stalled as far as doing anything in the building of any size unless this sprinklers go in.
Is there any staff comment on this issue? Is there a public comment? I'm going to call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, any nay? One nay from Commissioner Abel. Congratulations. Moving to the next item on the agenda, Resolution 2022-15, authorizing the award of construction contract B 21-012 for Lancaster Avenue Sanitary Sewer System Replacement Project to AJ Juric Incorporated and allowances for contingency and construction inspection and services in the total amount of $372,610 to be funded through the Sanitary Sewer Fund. Do I hear a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Steve, can I ask you to lead us in on this one?
Yes, Madam President. So as we have in, in many areas of Wayne, this is a very aging sewer line that runs along Lancaster Avenue and then goes through our park. We've had recent development in that area and we need to be able to accommodate that development. With, we need to replace these aging lines. So this line runs through the Veterans Park and connects to another existing line and it will take the flows from the Emerson Development across the street and ultimately through another project, the 20-unit condos down at 4207 East Lancaster. And AJ Juric has been vetted, they've been around a long time. So the project's approximately 298,000, contingency of approximately 44,000 and the inspections for 29,000. So we're asking for approval of all the above.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, is there any public comment? I will call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Is that unanimous? Thank you. Moving to item G, Resolution 2022-14. Oh, I thought I just read that, sorry. Authorizing the award of construction contract B 21-010 for the Gulf Creek Stream Beds, Stream Bank Stabilization at 210 Gulf Creek Road, project to Stonewood Land Shaping Incorporated and allowances for contingency and construction inspection and services in the total amount of $90,600 to be funded through the Stormwater Fund. Do I hear a motion to approve?
To, to approve or the?
Well, just a motion to.
Yeah, okay. Not, not to.
Do I hear a? Well, it's a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Sorry, second, sorry.
And is there any lead-in from you on this, Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this, we have a 1950s easement agreement with this property owner regarding the retaining wall on the property. Retaining wall was installed several years ago. There was some additional erosion at the tail end of the wall. So this is to extend that wall approximately 10 feet to add bolstering riprap to the base of the existing retaining wall and address some other areas of erosion along that property. And again, this is for the full construction inspection and contingency that we're requesting.
So this is a, this is an easement, but the, the project is on the property of the homeowner?
Correct. So in the early 50s, the township received an easement for a storm sewer pipe that empties runoff from the Gulf, from the Cricket Lane area down this property. And very specifically, it said in the easement that we are required to protect this property's stream bank. So we did a major project there several years ago and I think this will tie up some additional erosion that is concerned as well as bolster up what's there.
Thank you. Any other board members? Comment? Anything else from staff? Is there a public comment? I will call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass unanimously, thank you. Onto Resolution 2022-20, authorizing the payment of change order number 18 to Roadcon Inc. for the modification of Stormwater Basin Number 1 for the Radnor Tap Trail Project in the amount of $23,973.41. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. Mr. Norsini, I think this is you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. So hopefully everybody's got a look at the tap trail. It's complete, it looks great and people are using it. You may also note that Stormwater Management System Number 1, which is near the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and Radnor Chester Road, doesn't drain well. And this is another issue with the infiltration rates. So working through the Conservation District and DEP, we asked for the ability to fix this basin, which really will entail running a pipe from that basin to Stormwater Management System Number 2, which does function properly. And the School District, I've been in touch with Bill Dolan, he's very much aware of what this project is. So this is to get that project completed by the existing, by the contractor that did the tap trail.
Thank you. Any commissioner comment?
So I just have a quick question, Steve. So it says that there was, there's 6,000 and change. Is that going to come, so that's outside the contingency? Are we like tapped out on the tap trail?
Thank you, Commissioner, for my, picking up that oversight of mine. So as you can recall, we did have considerable change orders for the tap trail due to unsuitable soil. So yes, this takes us up, completes the contingency and we're requesting $6,000 to be funded outside of that contingency to complete this work. And I will, I'm going to really hold my breath when I say this, but this should be the last time I appear before this board and Mr. White's head perked up requesting change orders for the tap trail. This is to complete the trail.
Did somebody bring the champagne?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take an oath on that.
So will that come from the general obligation bond where we initially funded some of the trail from? Like where, is it 6,000 going to come from the general fund? Where do we plan to take the general fund?
Well, it, the, in this, yeah, so the 6,000 will come out of the general obligation bond fund. And as we've done with the other projects through the years, the, the variances from one project help others out. At the same time, the project funds are invested, so there's interest earnings to be used for situations like this too. So the, the fund is, is in good shape. This is something that it can absorb without a problem, so long as it's the last one.
And Mr. Norsini seems to have promised that this will be the last one.
Word of statement.
Okay, so it is from the 2019 bond, but we still, I know that there were some projects that went under. So, so we are kind of still status quo when it comes to that, that funding for that overall, all right. And just to elaborate, so I presented at the, Friends of Haverford Trails, they had an annual forum every year where municipalities from all over present about their trails and I presented about everything that is great going on here in Radnor and people were very impressed with our commitment to the trails, our commitment to just, you know, continuing what is, I mean, the tap trail is definitely a continuation of other trails from other parts of the, of the area. The work we're going to be doing at the Radnor Trail, the extension there, which is part of the, the Heinz, the Heinz Forge Trail, I'm forgetting the exact name, but part of the Rails to Trails project. So everyone was very impressed and Mr. Norsini and Mr. Capella and everyone else, our Public Works team, Mr. White, everyone who's worked on the funding for all these trails, you should be very proud. We, we really stack up well when it comes to the work that's being done. So thank you all very much.
Any other commissioners? Any comment from staff? And is there a public comment? See none, I'll call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pass unanimously, thank you. And on to ordinance 2022-02, the introduction of handicap space at 131 Plant Avenue. Do I hear a motion? And a second? Thank you. Mr. Norsini, is this also you?
But I continue.
Chief, there he is. Hi, Chief.
This, this is in reference to, we have previously reviewed this. They've submitted to the Highway Patrol Unit the needed paperwork, which is a signature from a physician relating the medical need for this. We are requesting the Board of Commissioners enact this ordinance, please.
Thank you very much. Is there any board comment? Anything else from staff? And is there a public comment? I will call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pass unanimously, thank you. And there are a, the remaining items on the agenda are discussion and direction on several items that are coming up in front of, from staff to the board. And I would like to ask Township Manager Bill White to start us with item J, discussion and direction to staff regarding comprehensive planning.
Absolutely. We, well, just quickly with this item as well as the redistricting, you know, given the fact that there are two large, very public-facing projects that we don't do very often, we want to do add them to tonight's agenda to make sure we have this discussion and ensure that the, the actions we're taking are in line with what the board's expectations are. So that's why we added them to the agenda. Specific to the comp plan, if you'll recall at the January 24th meeting, the board authorized us to solicit RFPs for interested firms. In that legislative item, we had, we had included a proposed schedule, which I, you know, actually, you know what, instead of trying to guess, if Kevin, if, if you could just quickly step through what that schedule was and then I'll, I'll take it up from there.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. White. We, when we prepared this proposal on, for the agenda item for your last meeting, we had a tentative, a schedule laid out that would have put responses for the RFP due into the township March 23rd with hard copies on March 24th, a question and answer period which would have closed on March 10th. And then we would have provided answers to that March 16th within anticipation of a special meeting in front of this board middle to the end of May for two to three consultants that were selected to make presentations in front of this board. And as part of that process, we were looking at establishing a comprehensive committee, selection committee that would consist of three members of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. White, Mr. Norsini, Melissa Khan, which we mentioned earlier as a sustainability coordinator, and myself. We would vet the proposals coming in, make a short selection and that short selection would then be passed on to this board for final presentations and consideration. We said we had a tentative scheduled, but through Melissa's work, we've identified some granting, funding opportunities that may put a slight delay in when this RFP goes out. We're learning that there are specific steps with this funding that we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. Otherwise, we could either miss out on funding or a portion of that funding. So Melissa has attended some webinars on those, I think one last week and one today. We're going to gather the research to see if these are grants that we can apply for that can possibly pay for up to 50% of the funding needed for the redevelopment of this comp plan.
Thank you, Kevin. So two things. First of all, that, that, we'll call it not necessarily a schedule, but series of events that get us from RFP to decision on the consultant. That's one step, that's the, obviously the first step. And that recommendation was made after discussing it internally, looking at what other communities did. So we want to make sure that the board's on, okay with that proposal. And then the second part of it is, you know, making sure that there's an understanding between the board and staff on, once we have the firm selected, what, how does the, how does the comp plan proceed moving forward in terms of the public meetings, specific areas that, you know, we talked about one earlier tonight, specific things that the board would like to see addressed, making sure that we're incorporating all of the different elements. Again, understanding that we don't do this very often. Make, so we make, want to make sure that when we do it now, we do it right and we do it comprehensively and it's something that we can all, that we're all satisfied with in the end. So those are the two things. First of all, making sure that the board is okay with the process in selecting the firm. And then, you know, getting the board's thoughts and direction on what you see the process being once that firm's selected. And I'll add one more qualifier to that is the, ultimately, when we select a firm, part of our expectation of that firm is to shepherd us through a process. So getting an understanding tonight will ensure that we're incorporating in those documents and are communicating to the firms accurately what you want the larger process to look like. So that's why the, tonight would be a good night to get that direction as we're finalizing these documents to move forward.
Bill, can I ask a question? How interactive is this going to be with the residents? Would we, would you bring out or whoever the, we hire, could they have town halls? Maybe, maybe a bunch of them, because what's important in my ward may not be important in Anna Marie's ward. And then they'll have to marry that and kind of, you know, readjust that. Is that, is that something that is being planned, is that talked about or?
Yep. No, so that, that's a really good point. And what, I mean, what the baseline expectation would be is that, you know, perhaps we have a comp plan steering committee that incorporates commissioners and key stakeholders in various areas of the township, from the residential, the commercial, institutional, all the different stakeholder groups that we have. And then that, that steering committee with the assistance of the consultant holds, yes, a, a series of public meetings. How those are organized, we can ultimately determine. Maybe, I, I don't know, ward by ward, maybe not, but issue by issue, you know, zoning, area, those types of things. But yes, that, I mean, I think having. But yes, that, I mean, I think having a lot of public discussion is going to be critical to make sure that, again, the plan is comprehensive and incorporates the issues that we want to see incorporated.
And how long are you looking, how long does this, does the plan take? I know they need to get feedback. They come up with something, I'm sure they're going to have to get feedback, and it's, I mean, I'm thinking right now, it's probably like Fenimore Woods, maybe, but is that, is that kind of the process? I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, during the budget discussions, we had talked about a two-year process, at least two years. And we had spread the cost out over, you know, 2022 and '23, anticipating that. But ultimately, I think the board has some control on how quickly or, I don't want to say slowly, maybe methodically is the better term, to get through the process, because at the end, we want a plan that we're happy with for at least the next 10 years.
And just a clarification point that I may have missed. Kevin, did you say that the RFPs have not yet gone out because we're looking into the grant support?
Correct. There are certain steps that you need to take. So our initial contact with the state on one grant, they recommended holding off until we get some further direction. If we proceed in a certain manner, that could render us ineligible for the grant. So we're trying to get all of the information to see if these are grants, A, that are valid for this type of project, B, that there's funding, and C, when the timeline is for submittal. Because certain activities and costs that we would incur getting up to a grant application would not be included. So we don't want to go too far down the road to find out that the RFP would need to be tailored and have to submit it, resubmit it out for proposals if, you know, we miss a step through a specific grant requirement.
And if I could just add a little bit, I mean, the other element that we're looking at here is, while we want to pursue the grant funding, we also don't want to delay the project for too long of a time. So we're trying to get a better understanding of what the application and award period is, and if it's, if it's months and months and months, we may come back to the board and say, it's probably not worth the wait, since we want to, we're excited to get this moving forward. But we're, I mean, that's what Melissa's working on now. Literally, last, late last week is when we started, learned about the opportunities and started digging in, so.
So when do you expect to make a decision?
I think one of the last seminars Melissa attended was today. We have not had a chance to talk to her about what the requirements for that grant were. There were two from the state that we were looking at, and we found out one we were ineligible for already, so they were pointing us more towards a later spring, early summer submittal. I'm not sure what the deadlines and requirements are for this other grant opportunity. Some of them have a 50% match, other ones only have a 10% match. So timing and funding availability, amount of funding available can also impact the decision on these.
So, Mr. White, I guess as far as the discussion and direction to staff, can you articulate what the question is?
Yep. So we'll break this down into two bites. The first is the review and selection of the firm, making sure that the, maybe not the dates that Kevin outlined a moment ago, but the steps in the decision-making process to get through the RFP and select a firm, if the board is agreeable to that plan. And Kevin, maybe just step through that again, without the dates, just the steps, so that we can absorb it a little bit.
Sure. I think the first step would be establishing the selection committee, which again would be myself, you, Mr. Nocini, Ms. Khan, and three members of the board. So we need to establish the members of the board. But then, once the RFP is sent out, there is a close-of-question period, then we would have about a week to turn around answers to those questions. Everything is done through the PennBid website, so interested responders send in questions. Anybody that has expressed interest receives notification that a question has been submitted. When we answer that, everybody receives the same information. So that would be about a week time between the deadline for questions and the time we return answers. From there, we would have approximately another two weeks before that to, final proposals due electronically, and then the day for the hard copies of those. We would get enough copies, hard copies, for the members on the selection committee. So we're talking about a two-month window from the time the RFP goes out to the time that the selection committee identifies two to three consultants, and then we would schedule a public meeting for those two or three consultants to make presentations to the board as a whole, where questions can be answered, proposals can be tailored in terms of their process, their techniques. Comprehensive plans and public participation can vary in how they're implemented and what techniques and practices that an individual firm uses. You may hear something from one consultant, but like another consultant better with their overall package. So then we'd have that opportunity to tailor the public participation process unique to that consultant.
And then ultimately, an award to the winning firm. So that's, that's the first bite, is, does the board like that plan? Is that acceptable, or are there amendments or other things that you would like to incorporate or consider?
So in general, I think it's a great plan. I think as far as, you know, the issue about selecting which board, which commissioners would be on that, I think could send me your interest, and Jack and I will determine which three commissioners. Love to hear from others. Anyone?
So I guess, I think that's fine. I think the timeline that you've laid out seems appropriate and inclusive as well, so we definitely want it to be that. I'm just wondering if we can also, I've had several members of the prior comprehensive planning committee from, I guess, 10, 11 years ago, 12 years ago, reach out, that were interested in participating at this time, and I'm just wondering if we can perhaps give some deference, just, you know, having a few from, who participated in the prior plan. I know we want to get new people involved, and I think that that's great, but it might be helpful to have that institutional knowledge as we go through this process, so.
Is that in terms of selecting the firm, or laying out the actual work to be done in developing the comprehensive plan? Or both?
I think both. I think both, certainly both.
So I'm not hearing that we're asking for resident participation in the selection of the firm, in the plan that you presented.
Yeah, it was, it was not part of what we had presented, but that's why we're having this discussion.
Well, that's, I mean, that's fine. I'm not, I mean, it's not going to be a hill, but I think definitely if we can circle back and make sure that, you know, if we have that information, I'm sure that we have the names of the people that were in the, on the original, well, not original, but the prior planning committee, to circle back and see if anyone's interested in participating as we go through the process.
Yeah, I love the idea of bringing in institutional knowledge during the process.
So two quick observations on that. First, the, this, the group that works together to review the RFPs, really, the goal is to narrow it down to the final three that are going to be asked to present publicly. So that will give the public an opportunity to hear these firms, ask their questions, and participate in the selection in that regard. In, in any event, members from the public, it would be recommended that they be part of the steering committee that ultimately goes through the actual plan process, so if that helps.
If I have, and when you guys determine kind of that process, will, and you, I guess, are soliciting involvement or engagement, we'll just, can we pass those names? Like, people have reached out, just pass them on to you guys, or?
You can forward them to me, and I'll keep track of those and make sure that they are included in terms of a final recommendation to this board to establish the ultimate steering committee for the development of the plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Kevin, just to, I think you said it, but you expect this to be a two-year process?
We were anticipating about two years from start to finish for this. Just, we had put in the RFP, and I want to make sure that I'm quoting it correctly, about the public participation process, that the, the plan provides for diverse and thorough public involvement in the drafting and adoption process. Public participation and involvement is a critical component to this substantial update, and then there was a whole section in there regarding the public participation process. We want to make sure that there is ample time for, because it's been so long since we've updated this, that there's a chance to thoroughly vet this through the community, to make sure that all of the issues, all the changes that the township has seen over the last 18-plus years are going to be fully recognized in the plan, and everybody has that opportunity, because it's such a major undertaking. If this was a, just a regular update, and we were just going through and updating some numbers, and it was, you know, eight to 10 years, it could probably be done in a year, but because it's been 18-plus years since the last one was done, we're anticipating a thorough update of all the mapping, all the numbers, so it's going to take some time.
So you, you don't think this can be done, a completion can be done in 2023?
No, I think this is going to stretch into 2024, as, you know, we're looking for the RFP to be on the streets for about two months, and then another two months for the selection committee to go through those and make a recommendation to get it in front of this board.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners want to chime in? Do you have what you need?
Kevin, is that pretty, I mean, it sounds like we're pretty online with the initial...
Yeah, I think ultimately...
The one, thank you, the one, if, I mean, we, we want this to be comprehensive and successful. If, if it is the sense of the board that you would like to see this move quicker, we can always work that into the RFP process. We can make that part of the selection criteria. We can ask our, the firm, the firms to present their timelines and timeframes, and we're going to see all this anyway. So, again, it would be good to know if the sense of the board is, you know, target a certain date or a timeframe, and then we could start. We might hear from the firms that, you know, in order to have, you know, this much public process, you can't get it done in this timeframe, so there's going to be probably some give and take on that, but it would be good to know now.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna hope that the firms that are selected are coming in with vast experience and can really give us a realistic timetable. Since we haven't done this in over a decade, I think it's hard to guess, but our discussions during the budget approval process led me to believe that two years was a sufficient time to get it done. I think, obviously, if we can do things faster, we'd like to do it. I am concerned that if you don't even know about a grant proposal application to go in for a couple of months, it's a, you know, I'd really like to know what the, the date that you would find out if you got it, and, you know, and how much you're expected to get from it. So when you were deciding, you know, I understand Melissa's gathering that information, but I think that's key. I don't think we want to drag our feet waiting for money we may not get...
Absolutely.
And lose some time. So I think that's going to be a very important response, when you have that information for us to decide about timing, but I think the rest of the plan sounds good.
Okay.
It will definitely be a balancing act between how much the cost share is for the township, the matching grant, when the award is, and how much. You know, some of these funding, you may be capped down at $15,000 or $20,000 as part of the project, may not be worth a six-month delay in the process, so.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking, if, if we're talking months and months, I mean, this was something that was fully budgeted for in the, in the budget. If, if it's months and months, we may forego the funding, and we'll advise the board either way on the timing and make a recommendation once we have it. But I, I'm going back to our budget discussions, and this was a priority to get moving on right away, so that is the intention. And like I said, just last week, where the funding opportunity presented itself, so we did want to just pause and consider it, but if it, we don't, not at the expense of delaying this, again, months and months.
I'm seeing some head nods up here, it looks like...
Can I ask a question? Can't we start it, and if we get a grant, just reimburse them, or?
Well, unfortunately, with a lot of these grants, if you've started the work, it eliminates you from consideration of, for the grant. So, and that includes soliciting for RFPs. Because I, I, well, I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but the grants typically are, if you're not able to do this because you can't afford it, here's the money. If we solicit RFPs, we've already presented that we have the money and we're doing it anyway, so.
Okay. I mean, I think we should just, this, we need, we need a comprehensive plan.
Yep.
So I think we should, and it's budgeted, we should, that's, that's my opinion, as opposed to sitting around waiting, because something's always going to be out there to grab. The question is whether or not you can do it. There's always a, you know, a shiny, the grass is always greener, and there's always a shiny quarter that you're going to try to get, but.
And it's a small sample size, but, you know, we heard tonight, residents want us to move now. So, you know, I, I mean, the grant's great, but I, I don't want to wait any longer. You know, we've talked about this for long enough, and every day we sit and look for other things, it's a day that goes by. So, you know, my top priority is timeline, and the quicker we can get it done, the better.
I think as Mr. White alluded to, we were ready to go with posting this, but then when the grant opportunity, we wanted to at least explore to see what that was. That presented two other grant opportunities. That, it's been over the last week that we've gotten those details. We'll get the rest of this from Melissa early this week, and then from there, be able to make a decision at that point.
So...
Sorry. Bill, I mean, the fact that we're talking that we have the money, wouldn't that, wouldn't that negate us getting a grant? This conversation in itself, that we have it budgeted, that we have the money?
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, the grant, the grant, grants have a process, and their applications are evaluated based on their process, not, I mean, they wouldn't...
And they're all different.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Borowski?
So, I hear what you guys are saying, and I, you know, I agree with the, you know, we did budget for it, so let's go for it. I think that when we talk to the firms, we definitely want to get a good sense from them as to, you know, they may have, and we're kind of guestimating two years. It could be that they say, you know, you can get it done in a shorter amount of time, but what I wouldn't want to sacrifice is the public participation in the process. So I think that that needs to be a very important component of the RFP. It's going to do us no good to rush through it, and then at the end, present something that the community doesn't feel invested and involved in. So I think that that's going to be really important. And the other thing about, you know, taking some time is, we had talked about, you know, being able to put money into the budget, to be able to do the things, or do some of the things that the comprehensive plan will put forth. So if that is rewriting our zoning code, or, you know, working on new ordinances or things like that, we'll have, we can start to lay in the funding for that, and I'm sure that we'll have, you know, as we go through the process, we'll start to realize, you know, what are some of the things that are rising to the top, the things that we need to start to plan for, so that will give us that time as well. So I wouldn't want to rush the process too much, but I think, you know, finding a good balance will be good, and I will look to the firms to be able to help guide us in that process.
Absolutely. And once this comprehensive plan is adopted, then that's instrumental in getting grant funding to implement the comp plan. So there's a whole separate round of funding for that, that once we get this on the books, we'll be able to apply for to implement the recommendations in the comp plan.
Final comments from board members? Gentlemen, do you have what you need?
I think we do. Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move us to the next discussion, a direction to staff. This is regarding redistricting.
So similar to the comp plan, from the aspect that this, this process doesn't occur very often, in the past, the township has hired a consultant to help, again, shepherd us through it. Where we're at with this right now is we have not, we don't have an RFP prepared, and we haven't, obviously, received permission to solicit for one. So this one's a little bit more at the starting gate, so we are hoping tonight to get some direction from the board on how you would like to proceed with this project.
We had previously brought in someone to help us whack out the township. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any reason that we couldn't call her back in to get that process started?
I didn't hear a comment.
So Commissioner Larkin is recalling that the last time that we had a, there was a consultant who helped the township with redistricting, and is that, are we interested in reaching out to the same person who's familiar with our community, or is this going to be open?
Well, hold on, we should decide if we're even interested in redistricting. Well, hold on, we should decide if we're even interested in redistricting before we say, you're putting the cart in front of the horse.
We're required to by our charter.
We have to? Okay.
So what I, what I would suggest is that we at least reach out to her a second time. I'm not aware, are there other people who are consultants who could help us with this?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. That, that particular consultant is from Lehigh County. So I think one of the prior commissioners on the board was familiar with her and she came in. I mean, I have the proposal in my file, it was eighteen hundred dollars. And she did an initial divvy up of the, in wards. It has to meet certain standards in the stat, in the statute. There's a municipal reapportionment act that requires this after every census. So, and your charter also speaks to it. So she did that relatively quickly and then there was a series of public meetings. There were board members on this committee and where the eventual product was different from what her initial, but it did take a little bit of time to, to get it right. And then it goes to county court and it goes through a process in county court.
I mean, I, I guess I would suggest see if we can get her back, but ultimately we're going to have to put out an RFP if there's somebody else who's interested. I think that what distinguishes the people is going to end up being not so much the product that they are promising, because obviously that should be governed by the statute, but instead how much interaction with the public and what's the cost going to be? And obviously background and education. If, if you've never done this before, I don't want to be the person that you're practicing on for the first time, but I guess you can convince me. Other than that, yeah, I'd just like to see an RFP that the staff can put out and then we can see what gets brought back to us.
So, you know, there are some, there, if you, if you read about redistricting, there's some very creative ways that communities have gone into this process. One is open solicitation of the public to submit. I mean, there are a lot of different ways you can go about redistricting. I mean, I'm just not certain that going and finding somebody who was here thirteen years ago but lives in Lehigh County is maybe, you know, the, the direction we want to take, not being familiar with that, having, I wasn't here for that process, so I have no idea. But, you know, I'd just be interested in hearing what people think about just process in general, about how to go around redistricting.
Thanks. Just to Jack's point, you know, before we, we talk about even bringing that individual back, I'd like to speak to the previous board that brought the person in and just get their sense of, did they like the work? Was it, you know, was it fair? You know, some of, some of those questions. You know, if they, if they didn't agree with the work that was produced and it created conflict, I'm not sure we want to, why would we bring the same person back to have those same issues?
You can answer the question, you've got the words that they left us with.
Well, no, we don't. The commissioners agreed to that, so it went through a different process. So I don't even know if they used her work.
Well, I'll let staff speak to that. I, I am not proposing that we exclusively use this one person. I think we have to send an RFP out generally. I'm just not aware that there's a lot of other consultants out there who do this. So I kind of want to attract her attention to it. If there's somebody else, by all means, let's, let's talk to somebody else.
So John Rice, was there a process the last time about, I mean, was it an RFP process? Was it as general as that or?
Yeah, I.
Did just somebody knew somebody and they brought somebody in to lead us through?
Yeah, the, this individual is, she's, was relatively well-known at the time. She was involved in the state redistricting, not just at a township level. So, you know, someone was familiar with her. She was relatively new actually at the time, but she had testified in some of the state actions at the time. So one of the commissioners contacted her, she was interested, she submitted a proposal, but there was not an RFP process involved in it. I, I mean, I can ask around in, in, in my office to see whether there's anyone else out there doing this. I mean, it's only really the first-class townships that have wards or burrows that are required to do this. All the second-class townships, which are most of the townships in Pennsylvania, don't really need to do this. It's just the burrows and the first class and the home rule that have wards. Because all the second-class, you get elected at large.
Right, so I would, I would be curious to see, I mean, obviously this is the year that all of us who are in that position, first class, have to go through it. So I would, I think that would be a starting point is to understand the process that others are considering at this, at this stage.
I wonder if we also engage, you know, we do have a very active League of Women Voters group here. You know, is, would that be something to engage with that group and involve the community on that level? I'm sure they have a lot of thoughts about how redistricting is done, I know they do. You know, I just, I wonder if it's worth it to, to talk with that group. Perhaps they know, you know, through their travels. There's also, you know, groups out there that do, you know, do this kind of on a larger scale, I think for the state, so it might be worth to look in that direction as well. Do you think we definitely need a community, there needs to be a community component to this and I think it needs to be early in the process? And I do think that we need to, and I, and I don't really know what the parameters are around. You know, I know the charter doesn't dictate a lot when it comes to this, except really that we have to do it. And I'm not sure what the other statutes are, but I think that if we set some ground rules to begin with, like you can't redistrict a sitting commissioner out of his or her ward, you know, like things like that, and I, and I don't know if we can do that. But I think that if I recall correctly, that might have been a problem with the last time they did it, which is one of the reasons why they kind of had to go back and do it again because some got redistricted out, so you don't want to do that.
I think you can, but they get to serve out their term.
I think so, but I don't, I think.
I mean, we may not want to follow that rule, but I think it's allowable as long as you don't unseat.
But just what would some of the ground rules be as you look at it? So set those parameters up front and would we want to engage, so does that become us and also the public who look at those kinds of things? You know, we've got one whole ward that's basically all the dorms of Eastern University, so, you know.
I mean, ultimately.
You know, things like that. So are those some of the things we want to look at as we look at the township?
Ultimately, the commissioners have to approve what gets sent to the county board of election. So the statute is very sparse on this. The only thing in the statute is a district shall be composed of compact and contiguous territory as nearly equal in population as practical as officially and finally reported in the most recent federal census, decennial or special. That's, that's the standard. So beyond that, you know, you can consider those other items also because ultimately the board has to vote, majority of the board has to vote to, to pass this on and then it gets vetted again at the county level. There's a court hearing on it and then it gets approved. So that's, that's the state municipal reapportionment act. That's, that's all it says when it's done by the governing body.
One, one last note that I'd like to toss in is that I, I would put a high priority on getting this done this year. Because a majority of the board is up for reelection next year, whoever runs, I just think it, I mean, I don't think there's anything that's legally inappropriate about it. Maybe others, maybe I'm wrong about that, but it just doesn't look great to me if we are voting on what the wards are going to look like in the same year that people are running for those spots, particularly in the year when a majority of the board is up for election, as there would be next year. So I, I'd love to get this done in calendar 2022, which is why I'm really glad we're getting started in February.
I, I do agree to that point. Plus you want to be making sure you're knocking on the right doors.
I would actually like to be zoned out of my ward if at all possible. You can put me in for different.
All right, thanks. So I, I, I hear the whole meet with the League of Women Voters and we did that and I'm not comfortable after the conversation that I had at the time. But there were some good points. I think that this is, should be, go to a professional, go to someone that's done this before. And then if you want to bring the League of Women Voters as well as your constituents in, then, then we, then you should do it. But, but I, yeah, and I think that if this board could come up with something themselves and vet the public, then I think that's something that we should look at too. So, I mean, I have, for instance, a couple of things in my mind. For instance, train on, train on split in half and I don't necessarily think that it should be. Probably should be in Lisa's ward, not in mine. But I would just like to see this, to what Jack said, getting this done sooner than later. And, but I would rather see this done with a professional and then the other outside groups can chime in as opposed to just asking them.
So do we have tools that look at the census data and break it down for us? I did, so the library, one of their board members works for an organization that has a tool and they did a presentation for the library around looking at the census data as the library looks to, you know, better engage residents. You know, they looked at things like, and the information that this one board member was providing based on this tool was, you know, there's been a significant growth in the West Wayne area and in Garrett Hill. And when you look at the data and where some of our, you know, where the, the various, where you've seen a lot of growth in the, in the, in the township. So do we have a tool like that? So suppose to Commissioner Farkey's point, we wanted to undertake this ourselves with, you know, kind of the public participating. Do we have a tool like that or would we need something like that to help us? I forget what it's called, but it's a, it's a computer. It analyzes, you input your, your census data and it gives, spits out all this, you know, demographic information and, yeah.
Would they help, if we don't have it, wouldn't they just help us out?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if they would just give it to us. I mean, they are company, so it's a board member and she works for the, yeah, she works for the company. It's not the library, she did it.
So I didn't, so I retract that statement. I thought it was the library who had a.
No, 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 it's not the library. It's a board member, she works for the organization. They did a demo for me because I was so impressed with what they put forth at one of their board meetings and they're using that information, you know, around marketing and things like that for the library. So, but it was really cool and I forget the name of it and I will look it up if we want, are interested in talking about it.
Well, I, so we, we have this technology, but we don't have the person yet to help us drive it.
Is this a GIS?
Yeah, I mean, part of our, our Esri software that we, we do have is a redistricting tool. Obviously we have not taken a look at it, we don't know if, what it does, but if it's similar to other Esri products that we have looked at, I would imagine it would do those same type of functions where it, it can take over a time, a period of time or two different data groups based on two different census, census, sensi, whatever the plural is for census, and compare those. And you can see, you know, where the shifts in population are and you can overlay that on top of our existing ward map and see where those movements are. So I think we do have access to a tool similar to that. Part of either the GIS coordinator, which we don't have yet, or whoever we hire to help us with this, if they have expertise in data modeling, which hopefully they would, I know the, the last person I think did have some expertise in that area, they would be able to drive that technology that we already have. So that, that exists. I mean, we, we just need someone to, to drive it.
We hire a consultant to do that and.
We could hire Esri to do it, honestly. If it's, but that's just the data piece, we would be missing the public process piece. But we, if, if we could satisfy the data piece, you know, perhaps there's another way to attack the public part of it if.
So does the public process piece come in before the data piece? So do we get people together and talk about, you know, what's important? Well, we don't want all of the dorms in one ward. You know, it's silly because there's only twelve residents in that ward. The rest is, you know, transient students. Not that students aren't important, we love our students, but, you know, they're, it's, it's a really small, you know, it, is there a better way to do it? So do we look at things like that, like what don't we like right now? Make a list, we don't want to redistrict anyone out of their ward except for Jack, you know, things like that and make a list before we start looking at the data so that we have those things, kind of those parameters. And when we run the data, we say, oh my goodness, you know, Jack is still in his ward, we better do this again or something like that. Sorry, Jack, don't want me to pick on you. Do, I see you puzzling over there. I just, I just wonder, you know, because once we have the data and once we run the numbers, then we're just doing it based on, and, or maybe that's what we decide. We're just going to say, we're just going to do it based on the numbers. But I think that's what happened last time and that's when commissioners got redistricted out of their wards. And while that's, they could still serve, what if they want to run again? Then are they running again? Then are they in a ward where there's an incumbent? Like that presents problems amongst its, you know, in itself as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably a little bit of overlap, but it, I could be wrong, but typically when you work with data, it's more complete. I mean, the data is what it is. So it'll show you the movements in demographics and shifts and, and population and those types of things. And then you react off of that based on what it is you want to react to. If it is, you know, if, if one thing is important to the board and the data supports it, then the data supports it. Or if it's important to the board, but the data doesn't support it, at least you have the data in either case to, to consider and have a discussion about it. I'm just, I'm not sure, and I'm not relating this back to redistricting specifically, just more generically, that, you know, decision-making before the data is made available isn't always the best decision-making. Because then you, you look at the data the way you want to, to, that best forms the decision that's already been, like, this is more edu, like, again, this is not redistricting specific. It's more, you know, just educational. So I, that's a long, roundabout way of saying, I think the data is probably important first or at least a significant, the generic stuff first. And then you start refining it based on issues that you feel are important specific to the issue. But, I mean, we're still, we're still at, we might have access to a tool, we, we need a driver. We can reach out to Esri to find out what their consulting fee would be to do that piece for us. We might find that it's affordable and quick. We will do that right away. And then, I guess at the same time, we'll, we'll also research and try to pull together a quick RFP and see if, if that makes sense to combine or put the whole package together in terms of not just the data, but then also the public part of it.
Yeah, you know, there are a lot of resources out there about, you know, best practices in redistricting. I would like to see, you know, staff take a look at that and come back and say, you know, we like this approach. I do agree that I think we need to have some professional leadership through the process and I also agree that it should be done quickly. So those are my feelings on it. Commissioner Jones, were you?
I was really interested in this this summer and I was looking at all different protocols for redistricting and there are some really cool algorithms out there, but it sounds like, you know, the technology we have would be able to foster that. And part of that protocol always said, always, you know, split it, unpack, what do they call it? Packing and you want to unpack using the algorithm and then you bring it to a human collective to, you know, kind of figure it out from there. And. And also, you know, I believe in not having commissioners involved, just recusing from the process.
Bill, this is a weird question. Can we offer like a grant or money? Can we pay a college kid, college, can we put it out there to the public? If we approve it, we give them X amount of dollars? Five thousand, whatever?
To do what?
It's come as a plan, if we like it, we go with it.
You mean to ask people to submit a map?
Yeah, we have a, we have a bunch of colleges and professors and political, poli sci people, I'm sure they could probably figure it out. I'm sure there could be some kind of...
Yeah, but I thought we just talked about having somebody that's done it before.
I'm just throwing up stuff against will and see what sticks, but to a certain extent...
That is a process I've seen done before.
Sure, so to a certain extent, I understand what Anna Marie's saying, like, we need to recuse ourself, and I get that, but at the same time, you know, these are our residents and, you know, like, we need, you know, you know, we need to have the stakeholder in there. I mean, like, there's a couple of the neighborhoods that we don't really, it's like, not like, for you and me, Anna Marie, it's like, anything, like, you're a little bit east of 320, and it's kind of like, you know, like, that's something that I should probably take or someone else should probably take, and like, I should probably give up, like, something like Trinon. Like, that's the stuff that I think that if we come together and then put all that stuff out there, I mean, there's got to be costs, you said, it's $1,800, what, 13 years ago? So, what's this going to be, 10, 15,000? Give or take?
Well, it was $1,600, I think. Yeah, $1,600 is what we paid the consultant last time, so...
And now, if we hired somebody for these GIPS or GICS program, they would be able to do this or not, or we still need an outside consultant just because of what Anna Marie said, that the township should probably want to keep as much hands off? So, this really isn't even relevant to that program?
Well, in either case, we're going to need someone to help us with the data points, whether that person is the same one that helps us then go through the decision-making process, or if it's two different, two different people, that's, that's what we got to figure out. So, what we'll do, we'll go back to the best practices in redistricting, try to pull together an RFP that hits the points that we've talked about here tonight, and then we'll bring that back to the board to get moving on. And at the same time, answer some of the other questions, like with the ESRI and our access to that, and if, if they can be that consultant on that front, like, answer some of those questions and come back to the board and go from there. But we'll move quickly.
Nobody's mentioned the elephant in the room on that redistricting can have very partisan effects, and I like the suggestion that we find best practices. I think that part of the instructions that we give to somebody is whether or not they're going to look at party registrations and things like that. I would suggest that, you know, I mean, if you're willing to tear the community apart by having something that's very partisan, you can have one result, and if you're willing to try to get to what best practices and do something that's fairly nonpartisan but reflects just the demographics of the community on other aspects, you're going to get, you could get a different result. But we've all seen the effect of gerrymandering and what that can do, and that's really what, that's the danger or the attractiveness, depending on where you are on redistricting.
Thanks, Ben. Are there any other comments from commissioners or staff? We're not, this isn't an issue that we're voting on, so not going to do public comment. Can you share it with us in another format? Thank you. And then the next issue is discussion and direction to staff regarding proposed plastic bag ordinance. I'll just say briefly about this one. This is an issue that has been raised at the Environmental Advisory Committee. They've done some good work, even drafting a proposed ordinance based on others that have been done in the area. I know that they're doing some research on it by attending webinars and the like, but the one thing I think that hasn't been engaged yet is the business community. I did reach out to the WBA, and I'm trying to have a conversation there. The advisory, the EAC had asked for access to a list of our businesses in Radnor, and I think we're trying to figure out how to communicate with the businesses to engage in this conversation and the community, of course. This hasn't gone to any public setting yet, there's been no town hall. The Environmental Advisory Committee is planning to use one of their meetings as a public meeting to have this conversation, but I just didn't want to get too far down the road on an issue that I know has, you know, is controversial in many ways, or some ways. So, I wanted to get a sense of the board or have this discussion, and we've not asked staff to do anything on the proposed language or outreach until we had this conversation. So, that's what this issue is, and I, is there anything that staff wants to add to that, or can we just...
No, I mean, that's a good summary. It's just before we ask Kevin and the solicitor to dive into the proposal, just to make sure that the board's on board with that, spending time and money in doing that.
Commissioners?
What do you mean by spending money?
Well, staff resources, I think, is essentially what we're talking about at this stage. Township resources, hosting, town halls. I don't think there's a lot of, there's not a budget attached.
Sorry, yeah, I should be clear, just referring that time is money, so it'd be staff resources and also the solicitor.
Yeah, so as you talk to the business community, I'd be interested to know, you know, if you're to ban plastic bags, I mean, there's going to be a cost involved, it's going to be passed on to consumers. What do we forecast that cost to be? And then, you know, project that out, you know, do we think people are going to look to go to surrounding towns to do their grocery shopping, or to go to CVS, which, you know, they can just cross the township border and be, you know, near CVS, Rite Aid, Acme. So, what do we think that would do to our businesses long-term if those surrounding communities don't pass similar ordinances?
So, some already are in the process, I think, to reference, looking at it. To that point, what has been proposed, and I didn't want to share that here because it hasn't been vetted by the solicitor or anything, but there is a draft based on other jurisdictions, and it's a fee-based, which essentially is net neutral to the business. It's a $10, it's $10, sorry. I think it's written as a 10-cent fee, which would go to the business because the paper bags and the non-single-use bags that they would be required to offer or would want to offer cost about 10 cents. So, the idea is that the bill is built to have a neutral financial impact on the businesses as much as possible. That's the intention. I don't know if it works in reality, but there's a, there's a ban plus fee. There's a lot of education, there's time to implement. If anybody's been paying attention to how Philadelphia did it, they did pass it, and then they left a six-month or a year before it would be enforced so that community members and business owners could get used to it. So, there's signage and an awareness time period. So, those are built into what has at least been proposed out of the committee. Again, I didn't want to go farther into the details about it with this group before we were sure we wanted to go down that path.
And, question, so would this just be businesses in the Wing Business Association, or does this also include, you know, Acme?
It would be a township, yeah, it would be a township-wide ordinance. You know, they're a very vocal group of business owners, but I think that if we're going to, you know, some of the corporate-owned businesses probably use more bags than the small businesses, so, you know, the Acme and the Home Sense and TJ Maxx, all of those, we'd have to engage somehow.
Can I jump in? I'm really the only, I'm the only small business owner here. Net neutral means it still costs the business money, because that's time and resources where they could be out doing what they should be doing, their core business, and now they're dealing with more administrative stuff. When it comes to paper versus plastic, I think 10, 15 years, we'll be right back at it, because there'll be, you know, the reason why we switched from paper to plastic was because of the rainforest, now the plastic destroys the rainforest, so we'll get more paper, and it's kind of a vicious circle. The other thing, and Jake, you make the best point, I think that I'm lucky, I'll tell everybody here at home, I'm lucky. I mean, I have a car, and I have a pickup truck, I can pay for $3.50 gasoline. Some people can't afford that, so when you make them buy, you know, they may take the bus and they may need, you know, need something at a store, and they're on their way home, and it's all business decision for someone just scraping by, 10 cents here, 15 cents there. It's a lot. It's a lot if you don't have a job, or you're struggling, or somebody's sick. So, I think that for us to say it's only 10 cents, or, you know, people will get used to it, maybe they will. That hurts me, and that, I think that hurts the poorest of the poor, and that is really one of my major reasons why I'm against this. TJ, pardon me, Trader Joe's, they'll pay you, that's fine. I think we should look at more soy-based, something that would be biodegradable, finding something that, something that mice or other animals can eat. I don't know if anyone knows about Ford Motor, they wrapped a lot of their electrical wiring in soy-based plastics, and it didn't go too well, because rodents would get in there. But my thing is, is the question that I have, again, it's very easy to say, let's just ban plastic bags, but I see single-use bags there. Are we going to ban garbage bags? Are we going to ban Saran Wrap? Are we going to ban the single-waste dog bags at the dog park? Ziploc bags? Styrofoam? So, you can hurt the consumer at a store, but they're just going to put those plastic products and paper bags on their way home. So, I get it, I care about the environment, I am a steward in the environment despite what a lot of people think. I care about it, I spend my time, you know, in the country at my father's farm, and I enjoy, I enjoy nature. But I would love to see plastic banned, but not at the expense of those who are the most vulnerable, as well as if you have, if you ban one, you should ban them all. Ban them all, and that's fine, but don't ban things because it's easy and it looks good and Philadelphia did it, or another township did it, and you want to keep up with the Joneses. If you're going to do it, do it, and that's fine, but ban it all. And the issue is, is why are we banning it? Because when you're done with this bottle, if you could recycle it or a milk carton, you put it in the recyclable and they burn it anyway. So, I don't, I mean, I don't really get it, I just think that there, I mean, I'd love to see this proposal, I do want to see it, but I think that we should be looking at not the stick, but the carrot, so those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think to that point, I don't, I don't know the answer to this. It'd be worth looking into, is there a way to incentivize people not to use plastic? So, so instead of charging somebody 10 cents?
No, no.
What a store, what a store give you 10 cents to use a reusable bag?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I would, that's what I want to see, but I don't want to start punishing people, and, you know, like I said, we have cars, it's great, but like, you know, you can't carry around a, maybe you can, you know, your, your bag, your straw, your this, your that, and then get on the bus, and then you have an emergency, yeah, I just look at those people that are most vulnerable, that's who it hurts. I have plenty of room in my pickup truck, I do.
Oh, go ahead.
So, I disagree. I think the people that look on the bus, you know, most of those people are not using single-sack grocery bags. They're using stand-up cloth grocery bags that they use again and again and again. I've lived in two places where this has been implemented, obviously not full-time, because I've lived here for 25 years, but it goes very smoothly. People get used to it, right? You do need to have these lead times where people get used to the rules, but you learn to bring your own bag really fast, and it's, you know, we've got to save, start saving the world somewhere. I think as far as going across the line, it's an admirable idea, but I'm not sure you're going to get people to stop using garbage bags. Most of the places, these are not a universal plastic ban, it'll be the grocery sacks, not necessarily the larger sacks, the TJ Maxx sacks at first, and then sometimes they'll escalate. So, but I think you have to start somewhere, and I don't think that the person you're hurting is necessarily that person that can't afford the bag.
Just, sorry, one quick question. Who would enforce, I guess Kevin's not here, who would enforce this? I mean, it sounds like it's a, is it a codes violation? And I just think that, to a certain extent, we need to protect the environment, but I don't think that we can pick and choose. I mean, we, you know, if this comes down to codes, is it like the bamboo police, the plastic bags police, the rain gardens police? I mean, who's going to implement this, and what are the fines?
Well, yeah, so I, there's obviously a lot of details that would still need to be ironed out. Well, we're, what it does sound like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's interest in pursuing the topic, and if that's the case, then that's the direction to EAC, and then we'll ask Kevin and John to chime in and work with those groups accordingly. It may be that ultimately, after they go through this whole process and present something to the board, it gets approved or doesn't, or gets changed, but where we're at tonight is just kind of, is there interest in pursuing the topic? All of those, these finer details is ultimately what needs to still be worked out, and yes, I do foresee, any kind of code enforcement is going to fall under community development.
So, I'll just, just quickly, so I agree with Maggie, you know, you have to start somewhere. You can't just say it's impossible, or we can't do it unless it's all-inclusive. You know, it is baby steps, and I think, I applaud the EAC, I know we had tried to bring something like this forward, I remember Commissioner Clark and I many years ago, so I applaud them for taking it, running with it, and I think as long as there's engagement with the business community, I think that's very important. We should go ahead and pursue it and see where it lands.
Is there any other feelings, sense of the board? I think what I'm hearing is that we would like to learn more. I think to everyone's point about what elements would be acceptable to our community, to our small business owners and, you know, our shoppers, I think there's a lot of variations on how to do one of these. Some of them include banning all single-use utensils as well. You know, we could broaden the scope, we could narrow the scope, but I think that it sounds to me like it's an issue that's worth pursuing. I think already some good work has been done by the Environmental Advisory Council, and they would either be able to come and present to us, they're willing to use their public meeting to host the community, business owners and others, and I think doing individual outreach to different areas of business is really important as well. So, I would like to direct staff to do some research, connect with the EAC, make sure that the proposal that they have is, you know, vetted against other options, and then get the public engagement part started.
Very good, yep. We will, through our new liaison to that group, we will get that message delivered, and then for their parts, Kevin and John will jump in when asked.
Okay, so we are moving on to Section 5, Reports of Board Liaisons. I want to open this by reminding us all that we spoke at our reorg meeting, that we would change the structure of what, of how commissioners engage with various commissions, boards, and committees that are citizen-led in our community, and we will now have a liaison, one board member will be a liaison to the committees that were selected by staff and commissioner input. It conveniently whittled down to a list of seven that staff believe would benefit from having a commissioner liaison, and with conversations and communications with all of you. I will just read out the way that we have been assigned, and then I will open it up to any reports from any of the board liaisons. So, for the Board of Health, Commissioner Myers, Dr. Myers is the liaison for the Citizens Communications Council, it's Commissioner Abel, the Environmental Advisory Council is myself, Commissioner Mulrooney, Historical Architectural Review Board is Commissioner Larkin, the Planning Commission is Commissioner Jones, Parks and Recreation Board is Commissioner Farkey, and the Shade Tree Commission is Commissioner Borowski. I encourage all of you to connect with the staff liaison of each of those boards or commissions if you are new to them, I know that some of you have been engaged with these groups for a while, and we will use this time at the meeting to do any reports back, the same way we have done when it was standing committees, but just a little bit of different structure, I'm hoping that it will enhance our engagement with these, these groups, and, yeah, I think that's it. So, if everybody's good with theirs, I mean, you've all agreed to your assignments ahead of this meeting, so thank you for that, thank you, all of you, for your service. I was gonna, I can start the report out, because my committee, we just had the major discussion about whether or not to move forward with looking into the ban of plastic bags, and since I am new, a new liaison to that committee, I'm just starting to get to know them and the other issues that are important to them, so, obviously appreciate the service of those citizens, and I look forward to working on that committee. Is there anyone else who wants to make a report?
I just, I just wanted to say that I'm, and I could talk to you off, you know, like, off the dais, but I'm noticing that there is a time conflict between the RML and the zoning, so we'll talk about that.
What's that?
I mean, I'm sorry, planning.
But also, there's, Anna Marie is also the, one of the new board members on the Radnor Memorial Library.
Hold on, maybe I read it wrong.
Yeah, I think planning is Mondays, and the library's on Thursdays, yeah.
There are also, I would, I would like to add that there is nothing that prohibits any of the board members from going to any of the committees or commissions that they are interested in, this is just to have an official liaison, but a lot of these conversations are things that we all want to be involved in, and I encourage you to continue to do that. There are also other committees and boards that staff did not identify as needing a liaison, but if there's another area of interest, we can always discuss whether to make it another official liaison to a committee.
So, I'll just quickly report out on Shade Tree, I just want to congratulate Seth Reeser and James Gibbons, who were elected Chair and Vice Chair of the Shade Tree Commission at their last meeting in January, and thanks to the hard work of Frank Paris, we have a, are continuing the relationship that we have with the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, and they have, as part of the Bear Root Tree Program, we will be getting 80 shade trees, shade trees and fruit trees that residents can request for free, and the township is going to plant them. We're looking for residents who are willing to plant trees in the right-of-way, as we work on, you know, beautifying the right-of-way, or the, like, the street areas of our township. So, if people are interested, they can contact the, they can check out the website, the flyer will be up, and we'll be distributing it soon. I also posted on my Facebook page, and I asked all the commissioners to include it in any of their communications out to their ward, so it's a great opportunity to get a free tree.
So, if the township plants it in the right-of-way, who is responsible? Because that's been one of the issues we've had the last couple of years, is now, you know, all these, all these trees we planted 20, 30 years ago, your neighbors are saying that they want them out, and it's, it's becoming a huge expense for the township.
I'm sorry, I guess I misspoke, it, it will be on the properties, so, but we want them to be on the streets, like, so, we prefer, I mean, people can get it and put it in their backyard if they want, but the idea is to have, you know, re-line the streets with trees.
No, no, I understand that, so if it goes along the street in the right-of-way, who's then responsible for it?
The homeowner will be responsible for it.
Because?
Because they're requesting it.
But they're gonna say the township planted it?
No, it's the township, that's.
So, they're getting a free tree, and free planting from the township, they are requesting it, the township isn't coming and just putting it on their lawn, so the residents are requesting it if they want one, and then they're going to be responsible for it, they need to water it, and take care of it.
Thirty years from now, when some other person owns that house?
If you ask for a tree, and you have it on your property, it becomes your responsibility.
But they didn't ask for it, there's gonna be a new homeowner, and they're gonna say, which we hear now, the township planted it, they're responsible.
Okay, so, no, so when you buy a house, and there's trees on the property, you technically never asked for any of them, correct?
I, I think we need, I think we need, we need to decide, you know, is the township responsible for trees planted in the right-of-way?
So, the township is planting the trees as a part of an incentive to get people to put more trees in the township. So, the trees are small, I would gather to say that, yeah, maybe in 40 years, they could be something that people need, but if people are requesting a tree, they're accepting the responsibility of a, of a tree.
So, I think if there's a way to, I think I understand that the Shade Tree Commission wants the trees to be out front of the property, rather than everybody taking a tree and putting it in their backyard. I think it still makes it the homeowners, it should be on, I would, I would suggest that we make sure that it's planted on their property, and it's not in the right-of-way, it's just, you can see it from the right-of-way. Is that what they mean?
Yeah, and people can basically say where on their property they want the tree to go, but the idea is to put, you know, to kind of re-line the streets with the trees.
But let me, I have a question, but if it's in the right-of-way, and it grows up in front of, say, like, a telephone pole, and I'm throwing something like, Pico comes and they chop the top off, right, and then the tree dies, it's the township that's gonna wind up, because, because I've had that, I mean, because in my neighborhood, there's the street, the berm, the sidewalk, and we have a bunch of those, were those pear trees? Those pear, what are they called?
Yeah.
Bradford pears, right? So, like, I have residents saying, like, it's in the right-of-way, I don't want it, it's dying, get it out, and the township has done it, they've done it with, someone planted a, those Atlantis trees or something, and they got all spotted lanternflies on it, and it died, and because it was in the right-of-way, it's my understanding that it's, it's the township's responsibility, regardless of who plants it. And Bill, you're shaking your head, yes, and that's what I believe, and then it becomes down to a liability issue, too. So, forget about neighbor, you know, plant a tree in my yard, I'll take care of it, now if that tree comes down, or if it's a faulty tree, or it's a sick tree, it's a diseased tree, they bought a bad batch, and a branch comes down, it destroys a car, God forbid, it hurts a person like on the Radnor Trail, I just would have questions and concerns with the liability aspect as well.
So, there's a, there are a couple of different things at, at play here. Commissioner Borowski's correct, if, if somebody, if the current homeowner requests a tree to be planted on their property, even if it's in the right-of-way, they are accepting responsibility for that tree. If that tree, either with that current homeowner, or some future current, or some future homeowner becomes a hazardous tree, and is dying, and needs to be removed, the township does take responsibility for trees in the right-of-way, so the township would be responsible for removing it. In terms of liability, when the owner accepts, or accepts, accepts the new tree being planted on their property, they become liable for that tree. It's their tree on their property, even though it's in the right-of-way, it's still their tree and their responsibility. Again, the township only gets involved if it becomes hazardous. If, if a subsequent homeowner comes and buys that house, doesn't like the tree, it's completely healthy, and wants it removed simply because they don't like it, and learns that the township planted it, that is not something the township's gonna take responsibility for or remove. The homeowner, through the proper Shade Tree process, can determine if they want to remove that tree. If that tree grows up and around wires and poles, the utility company's gonna come take care of it. And, and that's, we've learned with a couple of the projects in the last year, that we have very little say when that happens. But when, when Pico does come through and do that, they are using tree experts to manage the tree as best as possible. If, if, in their opinion, the tree, whatever needs to be removed, is going to endanger the life of the tree, they remove the full tree. They only trim and shape trees that they feel can, can be done, and also save the tree, or keep the tree. So, the management of the trees is obviously multifaceted, but specific to this program, the idea is to, to plant trees, and as soon as the homeowner accepts responsibility for that tree, it is theirs, until such time when it becomes a hazard, and only then, if it's in the right-of-way, will the township take responsibility.
Commissioner Mulrooney, can I just say thank you for putting me back on Parks and Rec?
You're welcome.
And with that, just, we, there's a great Little League meeting at the Wayne, pardon me, Radnor Elementary School. We are looking for coaches, they are, hopefully will be a coach this year, but they're looking for coaches anywhere from kindergarten to probably seventh or eighth grade, depending on where you age out, so if you are interested in Little League baseball this spring, please reach out to me, and I can put you in the correct contact with people. I do want to say Tammy, Tammy Cohen just does a fabulous job, and anyone that ever watches those meetings, when she rattles down her agenda, so much out there, when it comes to the Sweetheart Dance, which was this Friday, to a million other things that she has going on, so thank you very much for that, and to the board that serves. Also, real quick, Commissioner Mulrooney, back to your point, there should be, you know, if, if it affects your ward, and you're not on there, come out, Maggie's done a terrific job with Fenimore Woods, and I think that's great, and everyone should be engaged, and keep your residents engaged, thank you.
Okay, do I hear any other reports from board liaisons? I'm not seeing any, so I am gonna move to new business, is there any new business? Is there any old business?
So, for new business, I just want to bring up, so, on January 26th, Rep. Penna, Representative, State Representative Penna Quick circulated a cosponsorship memo for her soon-to-be-introduced Creighton Consumer Protection Act, and Jennifer O'Mara is a cosponsor, she is, yeah, a state representative for part of the third ward, and I'd like to propose that we create a resolution to support this.
So, I'm, I'm not sure that there's, in new business, I hear you, and I appreciate the suggestion that we create a resolution. I think that much of what we were hearing at the early part of the meeting is residents asking us to take some sort of action. I'm very interested in continuing to work with staff and the solicitor to find out what that action is, but as Commissioner Jones has made very clear, there is movement at the state level to address this issue, and, you know, perhaps residents of Radnor would like to put their support behind that. But moving forward, I think, as we all recognize that this is a very important issue for our community, I think we're gonna continue to look at it at all angles, that being one of them. Does anybody have any response on that? Sorry, I didn't finish my sentence.
Well, I feel like the, I don't really know what the resolution is, so that's part of my problem, so I'm, I'm hearing a state resolu, do we want a resolution to back the state, but I don't really know what the state's thing says, so I actually need to have some more information on that. And I also think that it might not be the best role for the Board of Commissioners in the acute setting of, of dealing with a business that's a proponent of this, that we might do better to personally support it, or not support it, rather than as a board.
Okay, then I will jump to old business, any old business from commissioners? And public participation?
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue, first to the census, I worked for the census 10 years ago, not in Radnor Township, but all over the main line, and so I was very interested when we reapportioned the township. The public was not involved, until such time as there were three plans, and then the public weighed in, and it is true that it's done mathematically, residents, and then there was a movement to break up the university, so one ward would not be totally full of universities. There was no recollection that party ever came into it. In the end, three commissioners, one Republican and two Democrats, set the ward system, and there was some horse trading at the very end. So, I just wanted to make that clear, because I've been here, and I've seen it, and I know none of you participated in it. The other thing I wanted to say was to thank the township for Michelle, Melissa, for being the liaison, the sustainability and grant writer liaison, the Green Team is moving ahead with a lot of stuff right now, because we suddenly have some support, and Melissa has been in touch with us with grant possibilities coming down the tracks, so that we feel like we can begin to do our work. And, not that the government has passed it, but whether there will be the money, there's going to be billions of dollars for EV charging stations, and one of the things I think we should begin to look at is where would they go? So that when the money appears, you're not going, oh, EV stations, hmm, let me see, now where might we? That's the kind of work that the Green Team is doing, is looking at what's coming down the track, and looking at possibilities of where things would go. How would you change the saldo so that you move more towards EV vehicles? That's gonna be one of the biggest movements in fighting for climate change. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Not seeing any, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.